Good afternoon. I'm going to call the March 13, 2012 City Council Meeting to order. Will you please rise with me for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one mission under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Please call the roll.
Councilmember Francisco.
Here.
Hotchkiss.
Here.
House.
Here.
Mario.
Here.
Rouse.
Here.
White.
Here.
Changes to the agenda?
Yes, there is one, Madam Mayor. We're going to be pulling number 18 and bring it back at a later date.
Okay. Public comment. I have a couple of speaker slips right here. We'll start with Kenneth Locke and then Ruth Wilson. I have two minutes up at the podium.
My name is Kenneth Locke, here once again. I started a page on my site this morning called "Losers Compete." I've actually done a sign that says that and it's gotten some chuckles out of it, but the, uh, it turns out through the means of tennis that, um, the person who wins through the competitive version, say, of tennis is not a winner. So it's a relationship between losers. And what, uh, I use the example of Roger Federer, the likes of Roger Federer in this page, and through the likes of Roger Federer, I'm going to explain what a person loses in relation to being a winner through competitive tennis. And, um, there's some things that actually Roger's going to lose, which he's never, possibly was never going to gain type of situation. So I get into that a little bit, but the, uh, what I represent is the winner of tennis. I'm the real winner. And what I was able to, my winning was based on the fact that I was able to conquer capital, uh, well, capitalism, but also competition. And it turns out that when a person's intelligent, what it requires a person to do to be intelligent is actually to recognize what is not intelligent and not do it. And then that's why I represent as an intelligent tennis player, again, a real winner, who was able to recognize the nature of competition and the downside of it and the fact that it is a, um, it's not a good investment of a person's time or life. Thank you.
Ruth Wilson will be the final speaker.
Good afternoon, Madam Mayor and City Council Members. I am really appreciating, so is Jack, how hard you're working and how diligent you are, and you're keeping us in the black. That's a major feat in these hard economic times. And I've been praying, uh, all month for your unity on the council, that you would major in the majors and minor in the minors and build on what you have in common on each of your endeavors. So I am reading to you today, very pertinently, from the Book of James in the precious Bible. James 1, starting with verse 2, "Consider it poor joy, my brothers, whenever you face trials of many kinds, because you know that the testing of your faith develops perseverance. Perseverance must finish its work so that you may be mature and complete, not lacking anything. If any of you lacks wisdom, he should ask God, who gives generously to all without finding fault, and it will be given to him. But when he asks, he must believe and not doubt, because he who doubts is like a wave of the sea, blown and tossed by the wind." And so I pray for you right now. I lift you up and I ask that the Lord would bless you with the desire to persevere, that he would grant you peace and wisdom. Amen.
Okay, that concludes public comment. We move on to the consent calendar and there's some items to read.
Item number five, adoption of an ordinance for construction prohibited in the vicinity of the Conejo landslide and homes destroyed in the T-Fire, recommending that council adopt by reading of title only. An ordinance of the Council of the City of Santa Barbara, amending chapter 22.90 of Title 22 of the Municipal Code in order to define new construction to allow those homes which existed on November 12, 2008, to be rebuilt when they have been destroyed by fire or other casualty. And item six, adoption of an ordinance for the lease of city attorney office space at 740 State Street, recommending that council adopt by reading of title only. An ordinance of the Council of the City of Santa Barbara, authorizing the city attorney to execute amendment number three to agreement number 16332 with BDC management as agents for the owners to extend the term of the lease for the city attorney's office at 740 State Street, Suite 201, from February 1, 2012 to July 31, 2017.
Thank you. Without further objection, we'll wait for the reading. We had items number two and five requested to be pulled. Could you read item number two? We'll do that one first. Any other items?
I have a question on one, on item nine, Madam Mayor, just a question.
Okay.
Item nine, I have a question.
Okay. So we'll just do item two first.
Item two, professional services agreement for business license audit services.
Thank you. Mr. Hotchkiss, you had a question on that?
I do. Thank you, Madam Mayor. Ms. Tarra, could you explain what, um, we say this would begin a comprehensive program to identify unlicensed businesses operating in the city and bring them into compliance, et cetera? And I'm particularly interested in the part about, um, homes that are vacation rentals now that may or may not be officially, you know, legal in the city, but still are, uh, should be under this criteria, correct?
Yes. Councilmember Hotchkiss and Mayor Schneider, this professional service agreement is to identify businesses that are operating in the city without a business license certificate and haven't paid the business tax. Separate from this, we have two other prongs to our revenue audit program this year. One is we'll be doing hotel audits to ensure that the TOT, the transient occupancy tax that is collected, as well as the tourism business improvement district fees, have been, um, properly collected and remitted to the city. The last prong we expect to begin in the spring is related to identifying vacation rental properties that are operating in the city and not remitting the tax. So it's to identify those vacation rentals irrespective of location that are, um, doing business as a lodging establishment and therefore subject to the tax code.
Right. So that's got nothing to do with zoning. You're not necessarily zoned to do a vacation rental, but even if you are and are not so zoned, you owe the tax?
That's correct.
Okay.
If you're operating as a lodging establishment irrespective of zoning requirements, you are subject to the tax.
Okay. I just want to be sure that people understand that. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
You don't need to vote on that separately. No. Okay. Item number five was the Conejo, um, ordinance that was already read into the record, and Ms. Mario, you wanted to pull that one out.
I need to vote against it, please.
Okay. So is there a motion for item five?
I move approval.
Second.
Moved in second. It all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And any opposed?
No.
No, one no. Okay. And then there was a question on item number nine, Mr. House.
Uh, thank you. And I apologize in advance to the city administrator. I didn't give you a heads up on this, but it was just something that jumped out at me. We're, we're off, with item nine, this is, uh, an increase in change order authority for the headwork screening replacement project at El Estero and for, uh, an increase of $223,000 plus. But it's my understanding that by reading this staff report, that this actually allows us to save possibly $1.3 million, and I just would like to have that maybe explained for the public and make sure that I understand it well enough. And I see Mr. Kelly's here, which is great.
Thank you. And before you do that, I know Mr. White also had a question. Maybe we should get just both questions out.
Yeah. And my, my question is simpler than that, is what's the budget on the Influent Pump Replacement Project? I didn't see a number on that. Thank you.
Um, Madam Mayor and Councilmembers, Councilmember House, is that the opportunity to save $1.3 million is due to the nature of operating a wastewater treatment plant. And that is, is that every time you have to stage to re-divert that flow, that is a significant amount of money. So by this design option that we've identified, we can avoid, um, redirecting the flow, um, or staging, restaging of that flow one time, and that's approximate value of $1.3 million is the cost of, of doing work at that treatment facility.
In a $4.5 million project, then there's something must have changed then that made it so, because it wasn't a plan for in advance to do this kind of staging. This is something that's after the fact. I guess that's the reason I'm asking the question, is that originally the, it was proposed at X amount of dollars, and then there was some sort of a change somewhere along the way that's caused us to need to pay the extra money. But I guess it proposed, it showed up some opportunity to save this other fund, these other funds.
The $1.3 million is considered was going to be part of the Influent, um, the cost of Influent Pump Facility, and I'm getting that budget number right now.
Okay.
I, maybe I can explain. The, we have to do a head, uh, new pumps at a later point, and by doing this work now, we avoid then having to do additional work on the separate project at a later date. So by spending the money now, then we avoid that cost on the, on this next project where we're going to be replacing the Influent Pumps.
Okay, very good. I think that got it. And Mr. Kelly?
Thank you. And, uh, thank you, Jim. And regarding, um, Councilmember White's question, is that the construction cost for the Influent Pumps, construction cost is $2.85 million.
So we're saving one point, something out of that, or it would have been in addition to that, that that would have, uh...
Correct.
Cost would have occurred. So it would have been a three, seven, five project or whatever, and we were able to drop it by a third.
That, that amount, yes.
Good savings. Thank you.
And I take it you don't need to vote on this separately? Okay. So do we have a motion on the rest of the consent calendar?
We do, Madam Mayor.
Second.
Motion in second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, thank you. Moving on to item number 13.
Counsel liaison to the Housing Authority Commission.
Thank you. Mr. Armton, do you want to start this off, I guess? Or I think there's just been a request for a shift, right?
Yes, it's our understanding that Councilmember Rouse has determined that because of scheduling conflicts, he's unable to make the meetings, and so he wanted to give up the seat. There has been an interest by Councilmember Mario, but we thought that the council needed to make that appointment, so we'll turn it over to you.
Okay. Mr. House?
Madam Mayor, I move that we make the recommended change from Mr. Rouse to Ms. Mario.
Second.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, there you go.
I can vote for myself?
Yes, you can. You always vote for yourself, absolutely. Uh, item number 14.
Presentation from the Santa Barbara Conference and Visitors Bureau and Film Commission.
Thank you. Ms. Geneva Dykes, whenever you're ready. Thank you for coming in.
Thank you. Madam Mayor, members of the council, my name is Kathy Geneva Dykes. I'm president and CEO of the Santa Barbara Conference and Visitors Bureau and Film Commission. And I'm here today for our annual state of the tourism industry update. In the next 10 minutes, I really want to accomplish a couple of things. First, we completed the first year of collections of our Tourism Business Improvement District revenues, and I'm going to refer to those as T-Bid throughout my presentation as well. So I'll talk about how those T-Bid collections have impacted our industry to date. Then I'm going to provide you an update of marketing initiatives conducted from July 1 through today and their respective results as well, too. And I think most importantly for you, I will talk about the different sources of measurement we have developed to show return on investment. I know this is very, very important, not only to demonstrate the efficiency of the CBB public funds, but also through the T-Bid funds as well, too. And then I'm going to conclude with a picture of some of our upcoming attractions, and many include new partnerships that we've been able to collaborate with, and, and I certainly recall last year's presentation, there was certainly some recommendations that the CBB serve as a liaison or even a conduit to really establishing more partnerships in the community for the betterment of, of all of us as well, too. But let me quickly review where we were a year ago when our tourism community had just begun a room night assessment for its Tourism Business Improvement District, and this, as you recall, is used for tourism marketing only. So from that point, we've actually added $1.4 million to the CBB's marketing budget with these T-Bid funds, and this is actually more than we had projected, about $275,000 more, and it's more than doubled our marketing outreach as well, too. We began marketing with these funds in July, and the big return on that investment is already evident. Now, while the T-Bid and the city's TOT money are accounted for separately, all the markets and the audiences that we target are closely coordinated so that the marketing efforts complement each other. One of the big objectives of setting up this T-Bid was how do we leverage these funds with other funds that we receive for tourism funding, and we clearly were able to do that this year. This really ensures the biggest impact for the dollar, and this increased marketing benefits the bottom line for participating hotels, but I think most importantly for the city, it really helps to generate more TOT income as well, too. So in our presentation today, you're going to see some well-documented results that impact the local tourism business and the economy as a whole. And as we've talked about, I know we've heard also from Jim as well, too, the state of the tourism industry continues to improve, and the results from the CBB's marketing efforts with the additional T-Bid funds are good, and as I mentioned earlier, they've certainly surpassed our expectations. Now, when we take a look at where we're at today in terms of the tourism industry, again, we're seeing growth in TOT, growth in occupancy, and growth in average daily rate, and there's a number of factors that are contributing to that, and that really one sole factor has been able to, to drive those numbers up as, as high as they've been. But it's really the combination of certainly increased tourism funding and thus, you know, doubling our marketing outreach. Obviously, the economy is doing better as well, too, and that's helped the industry. We've been able to certainly coordinate and execute a number of programs that we've never been able to do before, so our reach is a little bit further afield. I know one of the things that we're trying to do is bring in visitors who stay longer off-peak and, and spend more money in our community. But we're also taking advantage of some of the travel trends that we're seeing in the community, and this is really important for us as well, too. So if we take a look at some of the top tourism trends, you'll see how Santa Barbara stands to benefit from these trends. Certainly cultural and beach vacations are some of the top-growing travel trends. Obviously, we have both in our backyard. The USA right now has, for the first time, a brand-new tourism marketing arm titled Brand USA. You'll be hearing more and more about it as they start to roll out all of their programs. But for us, what's really critical is their focus is on the international market. Their goal is trying to bring more international visitors to the U.S., and thus, we stand to benefit from that. The U.S. Department of Commerce actually forecasts continued growth in international travel to this year. Meeting planners are also seeing a return of the meetings industry and the incentive programs, and certainly we're seeing some of that midweek business coming back to Santa Barbara and impacting not only our larger resorts, but certainly our smaller hotels that have meeting space benefit. And certainly, the consumer's pursuit of experiential travel will remain a driving force, particularly among baby boomers who are really looking for culinary and cultural happenings. And I know, um, uh, Mayor Schneider, that must be, you know, certainly important to you after the state of the city address yesterday, when we've talked a lot about the importance of cultural tourism, and I'll talk a little bit about some of our campaigns that are coming up as well, too. We've had two overarching goals. Certainly, the first one we've had for a number of years, market Santa Barbara as a destination for visitors and a location for filming. But this year, because of the new T-Bid funding, we've had to be a little bit more focused with the additional goal, which is to increase overall demand for overnight visitation in order to increase revenue, employment, and taxes, not only to the city of Santa Barbara, but also to Carpinteria, Galita, and the unincorporated areas of the county. And, um, as you can see, we started our five-year fiscal plan with an overriding goal, which is part of a five-year plan to significantly increase tourism business along the Santa Barbara South Coast. This is where we really started. How do we start projecting, where we should be at the end of five years using some of this new, um, T-Bid funding coupled with certainly the, uh, funding that we receive from the city and the county as well, too? But to do that, we had to develop methods and tools to really accurately measure the success of the CBB efforts, and this took a lot of research and developing a lot of formulas to set baselines as well, too. So we're not just reporting on the growth of Santa Barbara's tourism industry, but we're actually measuring the number of room nights that are being generated from the CBB programs as well, too. We've set benchmarks and developed tools of measurement with the help of a couple of different research firms. One includes Strategic Marketing Group, the other is Destination Analyst, and I'll talk a little bit about them in a moment. And then we began developing our programs with our advertising agency of record, MMGY, which is, by the way, actually one of the largest travel marketing firms in the world. Our five-year strategic plan was developed with input from our hotels, as well as the other T-Bid partners, and a challenged CBB staff was selling 58,000 room nights along the South Coast over the next five years. This is additional 58,000 room nights, so this isn't the total, but this is, we're talking about incremental growth. And then the goal this first year was to generate 7,227 room nights, which, as I will point out later on, we did surpass. But what's important about this new business model is that it was designed to increase the focus of both using the T-Bid funds, private revenues, along with the public funds as well, to generate overnight visitation in what is still a very competitive marketplace as well, too. And then secondarily, we're really focused in trying to generate new business for Santa Barbara, particularly the fourth and the first quarters, really the times when we need the businesses the most as well, too. So I want to take a quick look at what this bureau staff has done to date and how we're reaching those room nights in our hotels. So we began by creating a whole new design look, um, and this was created by our advertising agency, and this new design really is located in all of our communication platforms, anything from print ads to online ads to social media to website and more. And this new marketing campaign titled California's True Character gives Santa Barbara a real exposure online in traditional meal and, uh, in traditional media and appeals to a real variety of special interests, and that's really been the focus, is really designing our advertising to attract people who are looking for a lot of different types of experiences in Santa Barbara. And thus far, this campaign has brought to us 16.3 million impressions, and I'll talk a little bit about that later on and how that's, uh, gen, how that means, what that means in terms of room nights. The highlight for our public relations program, which is another very important program for us, was to capture some additional attention during the royal visit to the Santa Barbara area, as you know, too. That was certainly one of the highlights, and the advertising equivalency to that was $641,000. I'm not walking through every single highlight. I actually have the PowerPoint in your packets as well, too, but just presenting some of the, the top achievements that we've seen as well, too. The other thing that we've been able to do with our public relations program is also contract assistance in our international markets, um, the UK being one and Australia being the other. The UK is certainly one of our core markets and Australia being one of the emerging markets. And the goal is certainly to encourage media in those two markets to write positive stories about Santa Barbara and in turn generate visitation to our area. And just real quickly, I know sometimes people ask about Australia and why is that important, but in fact, it actually is the number one inbound market to Los Angeles, the international market. And so people are coming here to California, and it's our goal, trying to encourage them to come up the coast and spend several nights in Santa Barbara as well, too. Another certainly way that we help market Santa Barbara is through technology, and new combinations of technology and marketing have really given us various ways to successfully reach diverse groups of people with our message about Santa Barbara. But I think also, it gives us an opportunity to learn a little bit more about the visitor who's coming about to our area. Did they read our information? Did they watch it? Did they click? What is the profile of that visitor as well, too? So we now can give you that information with much higher level of accuracy. And speaking of, last year, we did contract for a return on investment study to establish the value of our CBB website. Keep in mind that all of our advertising programs, whether they're traditional, whether they're online, even our social media campaigns, drive our visitor to our website. But of course, then, we need to then find out, once they reach our website and certainly are, you know, looking for information and researching, are they actually traveling to Santa Barbara? And that's what's key, and that's the way for us to be able to measure the results of some of our influence as well, too. So we conducted a six-month study, and we did indeed find that the website is influencing a high percentage of its viewers to visit Santa Barbara. In fact, just in that, um, six months, it's estimated that 300,000 travelers came to the region, averaging nearly $50 per visitor, and that's the ROI as well, resulting in a total, uh, direct, total impact of 14.3 million to the local economy during that six-month period of time. And these are conservative numbers as well, too. So, um, so these figures, not only, um, these figures actually measure the influence of the website only. However, um, there are other factors that certainly contribute to the exposure that Santa Barbara's getting, and that, those are through some of our other communication platforms as well, too. This year, you're going to find us delivering our messages more and more through new mobile apps, and in fact, we launched, um, a mobile app this year called Next. You're going to see a couple more, and additional social media outlets that really not only encourage people to come to Santa Barbara, but what's most importantly, to really travel within Santa Barbara and stay longer as well, too. With the new T-Bid income, we've actually doubled our efforts to generate new leads for meeting hotels by hiring a lead generating service to reach more prospects, and you can see the excellent early results, a 42% increase in definite room nights booked. So these are meetings and conferences that are coming to the area. And then, of course, we continue, um, our marketing in the cruise ship sector that we found has been very, very good for this community. In fact, my sales manager is in Florida right now, participating in a national cruise ship show, meeting with all of the influence cruise ship decision-makers as well, too. So we'll probably see more of that as well, too. And as I'd mentioned before, with our additional T-Bid dollars, we've increased our efforts to really attract more foreign visitors, targeting, as I'd mentioned, our core market, UK, and then emerging Australia as well, too. And these international markets really did keep us afloat during the last couple of years when we did see the economy soften. Those international visitors still found the U.S. to be a deal, so it was critical for us to be able to continue marketing to them. And to do that, we actually hired in-country representatives to help develop consumer promotions. We've got a number of consumer promotions, both in Australia and also in, uh, in the UK, and then public relations, and then working with tour operators as well, too. And, um, speaking of tour operators, next month, we're going to be taking a much more proactive role, using these T-Bid dollars to become a, a gold sponsor at International Powwow, which is held this year in Los Angeles. Now, Powwow, it's a funny name of a trade show, but it's a very cost-effective trade show where international business is conducted. We are meeting on a one-on-one basis with all of the international tour operators who are contracting with our hotels to send clients to Santa Barbara in the future as well, too. We're also conducting a number of pre and post, what we refer to as familiarization trips, encouraging these decision-makers to come to Santa Barbara, visit our destination so that they do indeed contract with our hotels and our restaurants and our attractions as well. So as a result, we expect to see even more business. So as a result, we expect to see even more business conducted this year as well. One of our key marketing tools are our publications. You each have a copy of our three publications, our lifestyle publications. One is the Santa Barbara Visitors Magazine. We produce 20,000, excuse me, 90,000 of those, and those are primarily distributed out of market. The Source is our Meeting Planner Guide. And then we produced a new publication called Next. And this is a guide that is being distributed within our hotels. We wanted to encourage visitors to look at this magazine so that they know what to do next here in Santa Barbara as well. And then we also have a Next mobile app, as I referenced earlier, that complements that as well, too. Filming in Santa Barbara, particularly in the counties, had a real turnaround in 2011. I know you've heard a lot about this. With the improved economy, we're now seeing more and more commercials and catalog shoots as well, too. Our Film Commissioner has done a great job, is also generating new partnerships throughout the county as well. And then this year, really took a greater focus in working with the International Film Festival. We sponsored a number of different events to work with Roger and his team because obviously he's attracting some of the top decision-makers for film production, and it's important for us to be in front of them and talking a little bit about, you know, what we have to offer. So this is where we've accomplished to date, and the results we're now measuring with our tools, both new and old. I mean, we still use certainly some of the old standards of measurements, occupancy, ADR, but now we're looking at click-throughs. Obviously, bed tax collections is important to likes on Facebook. And then the, a new formula for return on investment of our marketing dollars spent that generates the room nights sold. So as I'd mentioned, we did that ROI study earlier, and what we did was, we really tried to determine, out of the total number of visitors that come to the area, how many actually are influenced by our efforts as well, too. And conservatively, we've been able to determine that 10% of the conversions are actually, are traveling, these are the visitors that are traveling to this area. So this is the incremental growth as well, too. So based on all of our formulas, we've actually exceeded all of our goals for this year as well. I opened talking about some of the good news, and certainly for us and our marketing partners that you can see, and we have, we've outlined the research and the measurement techniques. And I actually have copies of all of the methodology of all of our research and formulas that we've created, and I'm happy to meet with you on a one-on-one basis going through these. I know some of you attended a seminar that we hosted in November that really demonstrated the results of that website return on investment study, but I'm happy to meet with you on a one-on-one basis. Today was just a focus on the, on the highlights. And then we also provide you with quarterly reports that showcase some of the results as well, too. So you have here the latest hotel occupancies and ADRs as well, too, and you can see that the, the needle's pointing the right direction. We're also seeing significant growth in transient occupancy tax revenues as well, too. So let's talk a little bit about what's coming down the pike. Again, we're three quarters into our fiscal year. We still have another quarter, and we have a number of campaigns that we're going to be launching as well, too. The biggest one is called Culture 101, and it's a spring Culture 101 campaign that's really been designed to put a spotlight on Santa Barbara's cultural assets, its museums, theaters, galleries, and really all other cultural attractions. And research from this website ROI study showed that 29% of those visitors who were on our site were actually looking for information specific to arts and culture, with even a larger number looking for attractions and things to do. So our Culture 101 campaign has a goal of making a museum, an art gallery, or a theater become that thing to do. And as we all know, Santa Barbara has a surprising breadth of cultural experiences, and we calculate there are at least 101 of those that can be enjoyed by Traveling Highway 101. So beginning this spring, you're going to see a series of new cultural ads. We're going to be rolling out the campaign. It's going to be a little bit of a soft rollout this spring, and you're going to see different flights of this campaign throughout the year, as we see, you know, new theatrical productions and new exhibits at museums. But I think for us, it's been a win-win because we've been able to work really closely with our Arts Commission and also our cultural partners on this new campaign. The second thing that you'll see is our partnership with Santa Barbara Car Free and Amtrak. Certainly, one of our goals is to encourage people to either leave their cars at home and travel to Santa Barbara by Amtrak, or if they're traveling by car, or, or by plane, rather, but to use public transportation within our community as well, too. So this has been a wonderful partnership, and this will be a campaign that is targeting, for the most part, family travel during the summer months as well, too. As I'd mentioned, too, International Powwow is coming up, and it's being held in our backyard. And again, we have some great opportunities to showcase Santa Barbara to all of the thousands of international decision-makers coming to California. And then beginning this summer, we're going to be launching a new visitor profile study. The last time we did a research project of this magnitude was 2008. And obviously, it didn't make sense for us to do it during the economic downturn because the numbers would be skewed. But we, again, will be relaunching this, this provides us with seasonal information about what our visitors are doing when they're coming here, how much money they're spending, what other locations are they looking at, and how do they get travel information. So this concludes my presentation. I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Well, thank you very much, Mr. Hotchkiss.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Congratulations. It all sounds great.
Thank you.
What markets did the TBD, or TIBID, I guess you say?
Yeah, T-Bid.
Allow us to get into that we couldn't get into heretofore?
Councilmember Hotchkiss, Madam Mayor, most of the markets that we've been able to enter now with these T-Bid funds, so Tourism Business Improvement District, in case people missed it before, were primarily international and then also some of the markets that are a little bit further afield. So we're looking at places such as New York and Chicago. In the past, with our funding, our limited funding, we've only been able to focus on more of the regional markets, which obviously are very critical to us and very important for us. But we're trying to build new markets for our hospitality community. We're also trying to encourage to drive new visitors coming to the area who will spend more money, stay longer, and also travel off-peak as well, too.
In Australia, could you describe to me a little bit, you said we're doing stuff in country, couldn't you?
Yes.
Without going into great detail, I'm just curious about what that is.
Absolutely. We've hired representation in Australia. Now, that sounds like a big project, but it's, we actually have been able to leverage our efforts with those of Visit California, which is the state's tourism marketing arm. They have hired a company called Gate 7, which is based out of Sydney, and they represent California, a number of their destinations throughout California. And they will set up appointments with tour operators and travel agents and work with the travel media as well, too, and then design consumer programs. And so we're working with them on that.
Do we do any direct advertising in Australia?
We're not doing any direct advertising. All of our advertising is done through our efforts, through Gate 7, and then also with Visit Californias.
Thank you very much.
Mr. House?
Thanks for your, as ever, enthusiastic report. And it's, it's really appreciated. First, I want to commend the work on these incredible magazines. They just really, I mean visually, they're just incredibly appealing, and the stories are really, they go to, from human interest to gastronomic, and it's just really remarkable. Thank you. I remember that you've, in presentations at Downtown Organization and elsewhere, you've talked about this international traveler piece of the puzzle, and I'd like you to just take a little bit more time with that. We've talked about Australia and how there's been a focus there, and they've been really important. But in the larger picture, how important do you feel the international traveler is to Santa Barbara?
Councilmember House, Madam Mayor, actually, the international traveler is, is very important to Santa Barbara. Our last study, as I'd mentioned before, was conducted in 2008, and at that point, it was determined that about 18% of our total business mix was made up of international visitation. I suspect that number is actually higher. The exchange rate has been more favorable for the international visitors, both Europe as well as Australia right now. So I suspect that once we complete our next visitor profile study, that we're going to see those numbers continue to climb. I talked a little bit about the UK and Australia, and those are the markets that we're currently putting money into. We're actually looking at other markets for next year. And other markets include Germany, which is very important to Santa Barbara. I know that many people have said during the summer months, if you walked up and down State Street, you heard a lot of different languages as well, too, and, and they were carrying a lot of shopping bags, which is really important, too. But France, we're seeing a lot of Italian visitors as well, too. South America is an emerging market for us, and we're actually considering some representation there, too. And also for the luxury market in Mexico as well, too. So those are some of the markets that we're considering, but it is a very important audience for our area, and we have a number of hotels that do direct contracting with those, with those tour operators located in those areas.
I want to come back to that in just a second. Mr. Armstrong, we've had a strong, relatively strong increases in our sales tax over the past few months, and the TOT transient occupancy tax, our end of it, not the T-Bid side, but the city's end, continues to increase. How's that been going? I mean, the public, we, we talk about those numbers a lot internally, but how's that, how's that been going for the recovery, if you will?
No, it's been very helpful. We've seen, the first six months of this fiscal year, the bed tax is up about 10% over last year, and in fact, this calendar year will, it'll be a new high for us in bed tax. In the sales tax, the recovery has been slower, although we've had three great quarters. We're still not back to where we were. I think we're still about five years behind. But I think we're, we're very pleased with the recovery, and it's actually surprised us. It's been more rapid than we thought compared to like, kind of, water economic.
Yeah, we were talking about January, another 11% increase over the year before, and...
Yeah, the, the quarter that...
For TOT, I'm sorry.
Yeah, for TOT, I, I'm not sure if it was 11, but for year-to-date, for the first six months of the fiscal year, we're up almost 10% compared to last year. And last year, actually, the last six months of last year were very strong as well.
All right, really good. I, to whatever degree that, that goes to your committees, the commission and the Film Commission's efforts, we really do appreciate it. And Kathy, there's one other little piece. You know, I have an interest in international signage. We've talked about that before, and I'm wondering how helpful that would be. I know Downtown Parking Committee has talked about that. I got word from Downtown Organization, they'd be happy to be part of a committee that would really, you know, look at what it would, how we could make our international travelers feel more welcome, being, being here and signage for everything from parking to just amenities and things. Seems to me like that's important, but what do you think?
Absolutely. Councilmember House, I think anything like that really shows that we're welcoming our international visitors, and I think that's what's critical. If I could also comment about the growth in the TOT. I mean, as I'd mentioned earlier, it's not one single factor that I think that's really driving these numbers. I think it's really the support of you all, understanding the importance of tourism to our local economy. It's a $1.35 billion industry to this county. It's the collaboration of all of our different hotels and our attractions as well, too. We're very fortunate to represent such an incredible destination, and we're very fortunate to have so many people who work together to keep this community so beautiful and attractive for our visitors and, and market this to our visitors.
I have a new one for you. The Ukraine is coming.
Oh.
You've got to put that on the list.
Okay.
This week, actually, a delegation from the Ukraine is coming to Santa Barbara as part of the International Assistant Cities Program, and we're going to be hosting them here. I know the administrator's going to be out of town, Assistant Administrator, and our attorney are going to be speaking with them when they come by here next Tuesday, but they're going to be arriving, so we're going to make them feel really welcome, and you should put them on your list.
Okay.
All right.
Mr. Rouse?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Well, I, for one, am a little disappointed that the salsa soundtrack from last year wasn't part of your presentation. Kind of picked up the whole meeting. Has, what, what kind of efforts in terms of the conference traffic and large group traffic are we engaged in, what's the outlook, and how does that play into, we've got the new airport, clearly, we'd like to attract, the kind of traffic is going to eventually attract the carriers.
Right.
More and more. Is that, is that playing into your strategy?
Yeah. Councilmember Rouse, Madam Mayor, absolutely. We're seeing the return of a number of different segments of the meetings industry. The incentive business is returning, the corporate market is returning as well, too. So we've actually increased our presence at a number of different trade shows. We've hired representation to help us solicit new business to our area as well, too. Because I think what's really important is that sometimes when we talk about conference business, people think it only affects the larger hotels that have the larger meeting space. But in fact, if Fest Parkers sells out, then all of the small motels nearby will actually benefit with overflow business as well, too. So we're working really closely. One of the other things that we're also doing is really trying to develop or create and attract new citywides, and one of my sales managers is working on a Coral Group that actually would be potentially headquartered at Fest Parkers, but use a number of different hotel facilities and a number of different theaters for performances throughout the community, and represents a considerable amount of room nights that would be generated during a four- or five-day period as well, too. The airport is certainly critical to our efforts to attract new business to our area, and we've actually engaged in a number of different meetings with the airport director and assistant airport director, and looking at ways to try to get new service, or, you know, get the service back to Santa Barbara. We've actually just distributed a number of stakeholders, distributed a number of surveys to our hospitality industry to learn a little bit more about what market is important to them. So if we needed to really kind of focus on an airline and maybe a city that we needed to target, such as San Jose or Sacramento, which one is more important and would, you know, this, or would the community be willing to work together trying to attract that airline back to the area?
Great. Thank you for your presentation. I have one question related to the other side. It's not the conference, but the Film Commission side.
Yes.
And as you know, I was able to attend a small portion of a, having the California Film Commissioner, there's only one, right?
Right.
For the whole state, for the whole, and great presentation by her, but Jeff Alexander gave a great statistic about the film industry and how that actually directly affects our TOT and sales tax and so forth. And I don't remember the exact number, I don't know if you do. There was something like some 700, some crazy number of hotel nights in the month of January just based on...
Right.
The film industry coming in for whether catalog shoots or everything from TV shots to commercials to who knows what.
Right.
So is that something you're planning to track as well as, as part of the T-Bid? I mean, it's not quite tourism, but it's, it's encouraging Santa Barbara as a destination place to do film business as well.
Madam Mayor, absolutely. Film industry. I think people, you know, overlook the importance of that production business to the area. And, and sometimes when you think about film production, you automatically think about the big feature films, but in fact, the bread and butter of, you know, this business is really the stills and, you know, the catalogs, the, the commercials as well, too. And particularly during our winter period as well, too, because a lot of those East Coast companies are coming here and using our beautiful backdrop for some of these commercials and catalog shoots. I don't recall the number, but I can get that to you. But I know January, there were an extraordinary number of hotel room nights that were generated as a result of that particular business. And it is important to us because it does generate business, it's off-season for us. In some cases, some of those productions stay a week or in some cases, several weeks as well, too. And when, when we see big films, you know, the film tourism market segment is also critical for us, and we've had great success in cross-marketing. It's complicated and sideways in the past, and film tourism as a whole. People like to visit locations where movies are made.
Great. Thank you very much. Mr. Hotchkiss, one more question? Yep?
Yeah, not a question, just a comment. I was looking at, what was it called? Oh, the Pelican Brief the other day, and the last scene is shot in Santa Barbara. I thought, my God, wait a minute, Julia Roberts, there's a Channel Islands out there, supposedly Panama or someplace. So we do show up in rare times and great places.
We do, absolutely.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Well, for Buffy fans out there, Sunnydale really is Santa Barbara, and you know, if you know what I'm talking about, you're, you know what I'm talking about. Any other questions or comments? Thank you very much for the report. It's really great to hear every year.
Thank you.
Thanks. Okay, moving on to item number 15.
Request from Mayor Schneider and Councilmember House regarding single-use bag ordinance.
Okay, this is a request from two councilmembers, or myself and Councilmember House, and the way this usually works is Councilmember House and I will sort of introduce the topic. I appreciate staff did give, put together a short presentation of where we have, what's happened since our last meeting on this topic back in July. And then part of this present, part of this request was a request for a presentation from Kathy King from CEC and her, oh, is this from, this is from you then, you'll be doing? Okay. And so from Kathy King from the Where's Your Bag campaign. I'll just start by mentioning why I wanted to put... I'll just start by mentioning why I wanted to put this back up here. As many of you know, last July, there was a certain direction that came from this council. I was one of the votes for it at the time, and really just looking at where we go from here in terms of how to deal with single-use bags, there's been a lot of changes since last July, and I think many of the concerns that were expressed back in July can really be addressed and addressed very favorably in changing the direction, in being more consistent with what we're seeing throughout the state of California and other places around the country in terms of a plastic bag man and a fee on paper. I want to put up front the type of things I'm not interested in, which I know has been floating around, is a more expansive type of ordinance than what we've seen in many other jurisdictions. I do appreciate the potential litigation threat there, and I know we're going to get an update from that, and I think there's some things in there that we just don't have to worry about, such as restaurants versus supermarkets. I'm not interested in going down that path at this point at all. So, and then, and then also, and Mr. House, maybe you can expand a little bit on it, and it'll be part of the presentation, the idea of environmental review for a city our size, and I think we have an opportunity here to look regionally because Beacon, which is beach erosion, you're going to tell me what Beacon stands for, because I can never get the beacon down, but it's from Ventura and Santa Barbara Counties. They're actually willing to do the environmental review process, which would save our staff time from doing it and also cost a whole lot less than if we were to do one just for the city of Santa Barbara, and actually would cover two counties. So I think that covers a lot of the legal issues, so, but we'll see where this heads. Mr. House, did you want to add anything else before I turn it over to Ms. King?
Yeah, I do. And Mr. Armstrong, I gave you the letter there from Beacon, maybe you want to just go ahead and make sure that gets handed around as well. A representative will be here later, but I serve on the Beacon Board for the city of Santa Barbara, and I'll talk about that in just a moment. For the council, it's included in our staff report, but for the public at large, this is an opportunity to get a presentation from, some folks have been really working hard on this issue for a long time, starting with the Where's Your Bag Campaign that the city has, and the Community Environmental Council, Beacon, and then others who have an interest in this, that have been really working on it. Starting really at the very beginning with the Where's Your Bag Campaign, educational campaign, which the city has been engaged in for some time, and then recognizing that strictly voluntary efforts weren't producing the results that had been anticipated, the city council has stepped up that to the next level with what we did in July, which was to begin the process of coming up with an ordinance that would require some of those voluntary measures of the major retailers. We haven't gotten that ordinance out yet, and this is a time before we get into that work to take another look, and in light of other things that have changed and happened since then. Some of them, it was almost the same day that we saw this last time, the California Supreme Court was in the process of upholding Manhattan Beach's plastic bag ordinance. There have been 19 ordinances in the state of California affecting 40 jurisdictions regulating single-use bags. Santa Clara County, Marin County, San Jose, and expansions of LA County and Long Beach ordinances, they've been put in effect as recently as January 1, 2012. Milbrae, their city council just adopted on February 15, a single-use bag ordinance, restricting the use of single-use plastic bags and letting single-use paper bags that meet specific requirements to be sold for 10 cents each by the retailers. And then San Luis Obispo in January, for their entire county, including all of the, not just the unincorporated area, but the seven cities, banning plastic checkout bags and placing a minimum 10-cent charge on paper bags in supermarkets and pharmacies, large stores and convenience markets. We've also heard from the California Grocers Association that they do support ordinances like that one, modeling specifically San Luis Obispo's approach. There's other, others that they have supported. And then lastly, Beacon's support, let me go ahead and have this, this is, I'm with you on what Beacon means, I always forget. Beach Erosion Authority for Clean Oceans and Nourishment. And we deal at Beacon in a jurisdictionally from Port Juaniemi up to, or down to, excuse me, from Point Magoo all the way up to Point Concepcion, this entire area of the coast, actually further up. And all the agencies that are in this area, the cities and the unincorporated areas are members of Beacon. And we took a look at this whole issue, and I won't speak for Mr. Kamati, he'll be here in just a little bit, but we have a letter here that indicates their support for efforts to ban use or restrict single-use bags. Also, strong support, and I know Mr. Rouse is one who seems to support that, the educational approach as well, but then offering to assist the agencies in a regional environmental impact report, which would reduce the cost to any of the agencies of conducting that on their own. So there's a whole lot that has happened, that's why we have it here before us today, and it's a chance to really hear from folks. Our ultimate goal is to initiate the city council taking the direction of coming up with a mandatory Where's Your Bag Ordinance and actually having us effectively ban single-use bags of the plastic variety and come up with some kind of a mitigation or balancing factor for the paper single-use bags for large retailers. Get that in front of ordinance committee and then have it come back to the city council after all that has been done. So that's the reason why, and that's the scope of what we're here to accomplish today, Madam Mayor.
Great, thank you. So I'm going to turn it over. Oh, there you are. Thank you, Ms. King.
Good afternoon, Madam Mayor, members of the council. We're grateful for this opportunity, and we're excited to be here today to update you on significant activity in California regarding single-use bags since we were last here in July 2011. We hope that you will reconsider council direction given at that time in favor of a new regional strategy to be proposed here today. Joining us is Sarah Sheehy. She is the Director of Government Relations for the California Grocers Association in Southern California. She's over there. And here to lead off the presentation is fellow co-founder of the Where's Your Bag Program, Penny Owens.
Madam Mayor, councilmembers, thank you for this opportunity to present to you today this update. We're going to start with some updates on the statewide level. So the state of California currently, there are now 22 ordinances in place of our ordinances that have been adopted affecting 43 jurisdictions, and this represents approximately 16% of the state of California currently, and there are many, many more ordinances under consideration. So that number is likely to increase. So since we were last before you in July 2011, 10 ordinances have been adopted. Of these 10 ordinances in California, eight out of 10 follow a similar model, which is a ban on plastic and a minimum 10-cent charge on paper bags. As Councilmember House pointed out, two really important ordinances that have been adopted are San Luis Obispo Counties as well as Alameda Counties, and those apply to not only the cities within those counties, but also all the unincorporated areas as well. Locally, we had Carpentaria's second reading of their ordinance last night that passed, making it the first city in Santa Barbara County to have a bag ordinance. And also at the very, well, second to last day of February, the city of Ojai had the first reading of their bag ordinance, which also passed, making it the first city in Ventura County to have a bag ordinance. Several ordinances that were previously adopted went into effect as of January 1, 2012, and these include San Jose, which is the largest city in California to have a bag ordinance, Santa Clara County, and Marin County. Some of these ordinances were already in place but expanded to include small retailers, and that includes LA County and Long Beach, and both of those ordinances had a phased-in approach, so they targeted the large retailers first, and then after a period of time, the smaller stores were, became part of the ordinance as well. And also, entering, in 2012, San Francisco met and decided to expand their bag ordinance to include charge on paper bags and reusable bags, as well as to ban plastic bags at restaurants. I'm going to provide a quick legal update, but the city attorney has prepared a lengthy presentation for you on this issue, and I am not an attorney, so we just wanted to highlight some of the recent legal updates. One of the biggest ones that happened was two days after our council meeting, actually, in July 2011. It took place on July 14, and that was the Manhattan Beach decision. And the California State Supreme Court ruled in favor of Manhattan Beach and other municipalities its size, which its population is 40,000 residents, that they did not have to conduct a full environmental impact report. This was a huge victory for municipalities, Manhattan's beach size or smaller, because EIRs are very costly and time-consuming, and that may have potentially been inhibiting them from passing a bag ordinance. We also have the Marin County, which won at the county level, and that was challenged by the Save the Plastic Bag Coalition for not conducting an environmental impact report. Santa Cruz County was settled before it went to trial, and that was challenged because they had banned plastic bags at restaurants, and they no longer ban plastic bags at restaurants, and so they settled. San Luis Obispo County and San Francisco have both also been challenged for not conducting environmental impact reports. And LA County, unfortunately, here we are with this timing again, is actually, has been challenged by Helix Poly, which is one of the nation's largest plastic bag manufacturers, and that trial date is actually going to be heard on March 15, this Thursday. So we'll have some new information, but that's been challenged on the Proposition 26 grounds, saying that Proposition 26 prevents fees from being collected for bags without a majority vote of the people. The county of LA contends that since the entire fee is retained by the retailer and does not result in revenue to the local government, that Proposition 26 does not apply to their So, again, I'm not a lawyer, but from our surveys of previous cases, we can avoid a lawsuit with a bag ordinance if we conduct an EIR, since Santa Barbara is larger than 40,000 residents. If we exempt restaurants from the plastic bag ban and avoid Proposition 26 restrictions. So quickly, at the previous council meeting, council voted to place a measure on the ballot in 2013, and also to make components of the Where's Your Bag education campaign mandatory. We wanted to provide, as partners, both Kathy and I, of the Where's Your Bag Campaign, I'm going to provide a quick update. We're very proud of the successes of the education and outreach and bagways that Where's Your Bag has performed to date. We've distributed more than 7,100 free reusable bags to the community. We've educated the public at 60 different community events, and we've implemented an extremely extensive outreach campaign, including public service announcements airing on local cable channels, print ads in the local paper, theater ads in the movie theater, and bus ads on the local MTD crosstown shuttle, which if you drive around Cota Street, you'll actually see it on the back of the shuttle right now, and it reminds community members to bring reusable bags for all their shopping needs. LA County also had a very robust education campaign, but it failed to achieve its goals of reducing the plastic bag use in their community by 30% over a two-year period. So LA County decided to enact a bag ordinance banning plastic bags and placing a 10-cent charge on paper bags. The store component of Where's Your Bag has seen a little less success than our education and outreach efforts. However, I do want to highlight and commend three of the stores that have really fully implemented the education components of Where's Your Bag, and those include Tri-County Trodeus, and I imagine John Dixon might attend, and you'll hear from him a little bit later, Lazy Acres, and Scolari's. And these stores have seen an increase, two of these stores have reported to see an increase in reusable bag use. However, of the 11 stores, 11 other stores, sorry, 11 total, so out of the remaining stores that have signed on, very few have implemented any of the Where's Your Bag education So single-use bags can and do have environmental impacts. They often, because they're light and they easily blow around in the wind, they often end up as unintentional litter on our, on the brush on the sides of roads where the street sweepers can't collect them, and they make their way into the storm drains, into the creeks, and those both drain to the ocean. So Channel Keeper and many of our other community partners here, on our regular community beach and creek cleanups, we often, we always find plastic bag litter, and in fact, in Channel Keeper's cleanups, it's one of the top 10 litter items we find at every cleanup that we conduct. This data is also backed up by the California Coastal Commission's Coastal Cleanup Data, which is a one-day event in the fall, takes place for three hours, it's a statewide event. Statewide, plastic bags are in the top 10 items of litter collected, and locally, in Santa Barbara and Ventura Counties, over the last two years, the cleanups have collected 8,500 single-use plastic bags in this one-day event.
Thank you. Statewide, it's estimated that we're using 12 billion plastic bags in California. Other estimates go as high as 14 billion, and there are 247 million pounds of plastic bags landfilled in California every year, and I imagine it takes a lot of plastic bags to make a pound of plastic bags. In the city of Santa Barbara, city staff estimates that we're using about 29 million bags per year in the city. Other estimates range as high as 47 million bags. To give you an idea, just from one store, the Albertsons in Carpentaria, that went bag-free last March, or last April, actually, estimate that that one store in that smaller community was giving out 1 million bags a year. So what we're proposing is very similar to what's being done across California, which is a ban on plastic bags that you get at the checkout, and a minimum 10-cent fee attached to paper bags with definitions around what a paper bag constitutes, and the store would keep the money that they charge for the bag. This would apply basically to all stores in Santa Barbara, and we like the ordinances that have a phased-in approach, where the large stores defined by a certain square footage go first, and the smaller stores are phased in maybe six months later. There are a number of exemptions that we want to point out, that we would not be interested in including in ordinance. These are product bags, this is a new term to me, but we normally think of these as produce bags. They come on a roll, they don't have handles, and you can use them in the meat department if you want to wrap up a package of chicken in the produce department, and if a store has a bulk department for rice and cereal and things like that, then those bags would still be available to use in the store to wrap up those items. Restaurants, whatever they're doing now, could continue to do the same exact thing. Newspapers, in order to be protected from the elements and whatnot, still would do whatever they're doing now. For privacy reasons, prescription medication bags would also be exempt, so whatever pharmacies are currently doing, they could keep doing. Dry cleaning bag, same thing. And anyone on a supplemental food program would be exempt from the 10-cent charge for the paper bags, or whatever that charge ended up being. So the California Grocers Association, who we've been working closely with, supports an ordinance that models what's recently been passed in Alameda and San Luis Obispo Counties. As was mentioned by the mayor and by Councilmember House, Beacon could play a really significant role in this, and we have a unique opportunity here in this area to share the cost of an EIR, which would provide two benefits. One is the reduced amount of staff time that it would involve for city of Santa Barbara to conduct an EIR, because Beacon would be taking the lead on that, and the other is that the amount of money that an EIR would cost would be reduced by possibly up to 80% to 90%, depending on how many people join in on that EIR. We have already gotten from a small family foundation a commitment of $5,000 toward this EIR, and there are other foundations that have expressed interest, depending on what the jurisdictions step up to do. Here's a quote that we thought was worth sharing with you, based on the fact that we do agree that we need to do an EIR, is that the Save the Plastic Bag Coalition, who files most of the lawsuits in these cases, has stated, "We haven't challenged anyone that's done an EIR." So there will still be plastic bags. The product bags, like I just mentioned, restaurant bags, newspaper bags, because an issue that comes up fairly frequently when we talk about this is secondary uses, because people rely heavily on their grocery bags for secondary uses, but the source reduction that we would achieve by getting rid of plastic checkout bags far exceeds the secondary use amount. As you can see, by 14 billion bags, nobody, there aren't secondary uses for that many bags. But, you know, the secondary uses that people do enjoy could still be enjoyed with these other types of bags, particularly for smaller storage like lunch bags, food storage, and dog waste, and I find that restaurant takeout bags make fine trash can liners, if you want to put them in a small trash can. Something else I'd like to point out, as long as we're talking about this, is that we bring a lot of plastic bags into our home that we might not think of in terms of secondary uses, like what wraps up our bread. That makes also a fine bag to have secondary uses for all of these things that I mentioned, like food storage and even dog waste. So a lot of these ordinances specifically define a reusable bag, and we agree with that, we'd like to see that happen. There are a great many components to the definition that we didn't include here, but that we could go into greater detail at the ordinance committee level, but just to highlight a couple, that the bag should have a minimum of 125 uses and be machine washable. Now, I have found that even the polyethylene bags that you can get at the grocery store for as little as 99 cents, I believe Councilmember Rouse has that type of bag here handy, those are machine washable. I don't recommend putting them in the dryer, but they do wash just fine, and so they have a long lifetime if you keep them clean. So the ordinance would also include, you know, language about keeping your reusable bags clean, just like we keep everything else around us clean, hopefully. And Where's Your Bag will still be out in full force in the community, even if there is an ordinance, and we will continue to attend community events, we will continue to... to provide reusable bags to those who need them, and we will, at those times, remind the public about the need to give these things a wash once in a while. So just to summarize what we've talked about, we, the model ordinances that we have seen, and there are a great many wonderful templates out there that would make it very easy for us to adopt one. We like the phased-in approach, where the large supermarkets would go maybe January 1, followed July 1 by the smaller stores. And the vast majority of ordinances that are out there follow this model of ban on plastic and fee on paper, at least in the state of California. So that's our presentation, and if you want to ask us any questions, we'd be happy to answer.
Questions first from council, and then we'll go to public comment. Mr. Hotchkiss?
Hi, thank you for your presentation. At one point, you said that this would be, I think it was a couple, maybe a month or so, that this would just be the first step in what you look forward to, and that styrofoam was next. What else do you see if we took this first step? Describe to me subsequent steps, if you could, for banning things.
Well, rather than go into that, what we're looking for is, is partners within the region. So our next step really would be to go to Galida, who has indicated that they would follow what Santa Barbara did in LA County. If you recall, in 2007, when I first started on this path of single-use plastics and how they are harmful, styrofoam is something that is very easy to get rid of, and I thought it would be easy here, and it didn't turn out to be that way. So a lot of other communities since then have gotten rid of styrofoam. Other than single-use plastic bags and styrofoam, you know, there's, there's not, I'm not looking to ban everything out there.
Okay, so, and you said here, right now, you're just talking about large grocery stores?
At first, yes, and then...
And what, second, or third, or fourth?
Well, large grocery stores have a certain square footage at first, and then, as defined by the ordinance, and then smaller stores six months later.
Pharmacies, convenience stores.
Convenience stores, so...
Use the mic, Ms. Holmes.
If, if I could just, I'm trying to put this in practical terms. If I get a hot dog with mustard on it at 7-Eleven, with some chips and a drink, am I out of luck insofar as a bag is concerned?
If you wanted a plastic bag, yes.
Okay.
But they'll still have paper bags for a fee, and the California Grocers Association representative is, is here to weigh in on, on why they think it's important to include all these types of stores, so that, so that it's a level playing field for the grocery stores.
Sure. One thing that was said in the CBB presentation was, it's been noticed that folks up and down State Street were carrying a lot of shopping bags. I know you heard that. I don't know if you winced at the time, but, but what happens to Macy's bag, or whatever it is?
Well, you know, these bag bans actually exist all throughout Europe, which is one of our probably big tourist destinations.
Yeah, but let's just start with Santa Barbara.
But locally, I'm just saying that many other countries and people have adapted to these types of ordinances, and the tourists have survived, as has the community members. In this, in this type of ordinance, they would not be able to receive a plastic bag, they would be able to purchase a paper bag for a minimum charge of 10 cents, and that money is retained by the retailer. So that's money back into the pockets of local business owners. Additionally, the owners may have taken it upon themselves to sell some of the beautiful reusable bags that are available for 99 cents up to $5, and again, that would be additional revenue for local business owners.
Okay, so those bags would disappear unless they were paid for?
Mm-hmm.
Other questions? I'd like to hear from representative from the California Grocers Association, just sort of your, the thought process, what the official position is, and I'm assuming this is statewide.
This is statewide, yes.
I'm sorry, could you state your name for the record?
Sorry, yes, my name is Sarah Sheehy, I'm with the California Grocers Association. Our position is, we were actually huge supporters of AB 1998, which, at the state level, was sort of this ban-plastic, charge-for-paper model. We really were looking for a statewide solution, because the patchwork is really what has become problematic for our retailers. So we were thrilled to work with Santa Barbara Channel Keepers in trying to adapt, kind of using City of Santa Barbara, trying to create a model, and then moving forward with a larger strategy that would sort of encompass a lot of the different areas within Santa Barbara County, and hopefully moving on to Ventura County. We like the charge for paper, what we saw in San Francisco in 2007, they were the first jurisdiction to ban plastic bags, and what we saw is that customers just went to the other free option, which was paper. Paper is much more expensive for our members to provide, and it ended up costing our stores $60,000 to $80,000 a year in additional expenses, which, you know, if you, you know, San Francisco's fairly large, you know, Santa Barbara's not a small city by any means, so you know, there are a couple, companies had, you know, three, four, five stores in the region, and they were, so they were getting hit pretty hard. What we found is that by implementing a charge on paper, and 10 cents seems to be the going rate, it encourages customers to bring in reusable bags, but protects them when they need a low-cost option for unplanned purchases. So you go to the grocery store, you buy three, you bring in three reusable bags, you've got your list, and then your wife or your husband calls and says, "Oh, can you pick up formula? Can you pick up diapers? Can you pick up..." All of a sudden, you need another bag. So allowing for the 10-cent charge, you know, then you can pay 10 cents for an extra paper bag versus $1 or $1.50 for another reusable bag, when you might have 10 more at home. Or the alternative would be not to buy the extra purchases, which is extremely harmful for our members. And so that's, we really found this model to be the one that works the best. The city, in the city of Calabasas, Albertsons actually anecdotally told us that 98% of their customers now bring in reusable bags. So this model really does work in incentivizing reusable bag use, while still protecting our retailers. Finally, on the note with LA County, we believe that LA County got sued, because they very explicitly stated in their ordinance how retailers should use the charge, which is why it's getting sued under Prop 26. Other jurisdictions that have not included that language have not been sued. So just food for thought as you draft. And then, oh, and then, we do recommend all retailers, a bag is a bag is a bag, is sort of how we view it. So if our paper bags are, and our plastic bags are damaging to the environment, then we believe Macy's and Nordstrom's and everybody else is also damaging to the environment. We, I know Councilmember House, you mentioned sort of not including small retailers. If they sell grocery products, and, you know, this includes pharmacies, gas stations, mini-marts, convenience stores, 7-Eleven, anyone that sells chips and chips, we really think everybody needs to be under the same, have the same rules. That just creates sort of an economic level playing field for all of the retailers. We are fine with a phased-in approach, so if you give large stores sort of, we like, we ask for three to six months, just so they can use their supply. And then if you want to phase in smaller stores in nine months, we are okay with that. But we do think all retailers, especially all types of grocery stores, and you can sort of define, you can look at different ordinances that sort of define grocery store, we believe they should all be included with the same parameters.
Thank you. Mr. Rouse had a question.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Ms. Sheehy, I was kind of curious, would the WIC exempt folks that would not be paying the paper bag charge? Now, anecdotally, I just noticed in some of these neighborhoods, these people aren't exactly driving their cars to the store, they're walking from their neighborhoods to buy groceries and back, and I'm not so sure how practical these paper bags are going to be in that situation. Is it a plan or a feature anywhere to provide those kinds of folks with the cloth, the more permanent bags, the cloth canvas bags, is that, is that programmatically in place in some places?
It is. They're not required to, though. Retailers would not be required to give out a reusable bag, but it is an option. So they could give out paper or reusable at no charge to WIC or other food program recipients. I think that, again, you know, it kind of depends on the store, but I think most stores see the significance in providing a reusable bag as opposed to paper bags over and over again. And I think, quite frankly, you know, I mean, I think our stores like to see the paper, you know, they don't want to have a whole lot of paper bags on hand either, so I think the more they promote reusable bag use, the better. I mean, I think our industry has really been on the forefront of promoting reusable bag use, more so than I think a lot of other industries.
I guess my question was more to, is there actually a program in place, or is this just kind of an idea that's out there to go forward with that?
Well...
For those types of citizens?
Yeah, I haven't heard of a, I mean, there's obviously programs in place, right? So there's different promotional periods that you could give away reusable bags, and it could be for, you know, WIC recipients, or other food program recipients, or it could be surrounding Earth Day, or it could be, I mean, there could be a number of different reasons why you would give out a reusable bag for free. But in terms of, what I've seen in ordinance language in other jurisdictions, is that the charge is exempt for either a paper bag or a reusable bag for WIC recipients. That's the language. And it's up to the store to decide which one they would want to give out for free, but they are not allowed to charge for them.
Okay, thank you. I had a question that might relate more to Ms. King, and maybe to one of the present grocers or retailers. And that is, in, in a retail model, oftentimes, they do not encourage you to bring in bags or backpacks, in fact, you have to check them at the counter. So when we go to another model where we are no longer allowing people to do that, or encouraging people to bring in a reusable bag, some of the feedback I've gotten from some of the smaller retailers and merchants is that they have issues with security and shoplifting. Is that something, I don't know which one of you would maybe like to address that, if that's been a subject of conversation so far?
I can speak for grocery stores. We have not seen that at all. I haven't heard, actually, from any one of my membership that store theft has increased, you know, simultaneously with the passage of any of these ordinances. I can't speak for, you know, a small boutique shop that's not selling grocery items, but from CGA's perspective, we have not seen that to be the case.
Well, I know that there was some comment, when the downtown organization, for example, has the Shop Spree program, they provide canvas bags, Shop Spree Santa Barbara's as a promotion. And one of the unanticipated reactions from some of the merchants, and I don't know what, how it's, how it based itself in results, was that, well, you know, that you walk in with a bag, I don't know if you brought that item in, brought it out, or if you have to load up your bag with small items to take you to checkout, are you in the process of buying something or taking it home? So, Ms. King, have you had any conversations about that so far, in terms of the overall plans for elimination of all these handled bags?
No, Councilmember Rouse, no, I have not. A great many of these ordinances have just gone into effect within the past year, so there isn't a lot of data surrounding topics like this. But Where's Your Bag, we like to give away Chico bags, which tuck into your purse, and they're, they're foldable into a little ball, so we promote those types of bags, which makes it less obvious that you're carrying a bag with you when you go into a store. But no, I haven't heard anything about increased theft.
Thank you.
Want to be clear, something Mr. Hotchkiss says about the Macy's and Nordstrom's or whatever, so you go in there, you go shopping, you buy your clothes or shoes or whatever, you didn't bring a reusable bag, you don't usually think about that, per se, but the paper bags would still be available for 10 cents, pretty much, if that's what the ordinance says?
Yes, yeah, Madam Mayor, yes, that's correct, and, you know, they can, they'll be charging 10 cents for them, which I imagine they cost a lot more than that, but, yeah, they can still provide them.
Okay. Mr. House?
Yes, I just, and I wanted to be sure I understood this, because I was listening very carefully to that piece of it. So the idea is that there's nothing here that would inhibit somebody from making an impulse purchase, or adding on to what they may have already anticipated, or if, like me, they only brought one of their 50 bags that's in the car into the place, and I've got too much, it's cheap and not a big deal, and doesn't hold me back from buying stuff.
It doesn't seem to. It seems to be, and some of this, again, some of this, as Kathy stated, it's, stuff has only been, you know, implemented for a year, so it's, it's a little hard to come up with tried-and-true data. And some of this is based off the Master Environmental Assessment Study that was done by Green Cities California. And what it said was, 10 cents seems to be the tipping point that really does encourage, it seems to be the floor that encourages reusable bag use. But yet, if a customer just forgot, or makes an unplanned purchase, it's, you know, they can handle paying the dime, especially since that's not every trip. I mean, oftentimes, you know, this might happen once a week, or once every other week, depending how often you shop. That's what we are seeing.
Very good. I just want to make sure I got that principle. I see Mr. Reddy is here, also from Beacon. I know Mr. Kamadi was planning on coming, and is Mr. Reddy, are you going to be presenting for Beacon today? Okay, in just a moment. We had a letter that was distributed, and then maybe you can cover that. Question for our staff, Mr. Forrester's here, maybe we can just have him take a moment with us. In preparing our request today, in the statement of reasons why it's appropriate for, and within our jurisdiction of the council, consider the subject matter and take the requested action, we wrote that it's in the city's interest to reduce waste, promote the use of reusable shopping bags, and ensure our creeks, beaches, and ocean are kept clean and free of ambient waste such as single-use plastic bags, and that it was consistent with existing policies. And you've been working on this for some time, from the city's perspective, or similar kinds of things. So can you just reflect a little bit on where we are right now with our, our goals of reducing this kind of waste, and how that relates to what we're discussing today?
Sure, Madam Mayor, Councilmember House, I'll just briefly address each of those. From a waste management standpoint, you know, as we've said to this body before, plastic bags really make up a very small percentage of the city's waste stream. You know, from our research, based on waste composition studies that we've done in the past, we're confident that most of them, that the overwhelming majority are ending up either recycled at the store through bills like AB 2449, or frankly, they're buried in the landfill.
I'm sorry to interrupt. I just want to, I'm sorry, the students who are here have to go, but I want to thank them for being here, and you came in and out, and so, adios, but thank you for coming, and your presence was definitely noted. I'm sorry to interrupt, Mr. Forrester. I didn't know they were leaving.
So in terms of disposal, we're, we're pretty confident that they're either, you know, some are recycled, although the statewide rate is not real high. But we believe that the bulk majority, based upon our waste composition studies and just what we know, what is buried at Taheguis landfill, they're being buried and disposed. You know, as we mentioned in July of last year, when we were last here in front of council, we also arranged through the county staff, we jointly approached Gold Coast Recycling, our recycler in Ventura, and they're now accepting plastic bags for recycling in all the blue containers, the carts, cans, and dumpsters. So that's another outlet that we're, we're capturing. I don't know if you've seen in the past month or two, we have had a joint public outreach campaign, getting that message out with the county, so that's getting out. In terms of a litter component, that was another issue that we have, that we looked at, you know, it's, the data's kind of inconclusive. We see, you know, there's some litter, you know, we've given you statistics, and Kathy and Penny certainly gave that today, that we do find them, you know, they're there, but the source is, and how much does the city contribute to the problem, either in the marine environment, you know, we have surveyed the harbor patrol, the waterfront, and other city agencies, and said, "How often do you find plastic bags?" Anecdotally, we hear from surfers, they find them occasionally. When we talk to other city staff, either parks or waterfront, they're really not seeing them all that often. Those that are in the marine environment, it's inconclusive what percentage of those actually originated and came from the city of Santa Barbara. And so we've also given you a little bit of information, we surveyed the creeks division as well. Rather than answer for that, Mr. Cameron Benson's here, and I would like to probably defer to him to more talk about how often they see them.
That's great. Thank you. Yes, Mr. Benson, if you...
Madam Mayor, could I ask a question of?
Of Mr. Forrester?
Mm-hmm.
Go ahead. And then, Mr. Benson will come up.
Thank you. Mr. Forrester, when did the, when did Gold Coast start recycling plastic bags?
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Francisco, I'll have to get the exact date, but it was last year at some point.
Okay, okay. And I don't know if there's a, if there's a rule of thumb about this sort of thing, but in general, how long does it take for the public to become aware... but in general, how long does it take for the public to become aware of some new thing that can be recycled, and start actually taking advantage of that in significant numbers?
It's a function of how much messaging we do to the public. I mean, really, if we were to blanket the airwaves in all print media, you know, nonstop, it would probably be fairly easy to cover a city the size of Santa Barbara. Really, it's a function of awareness, I believe.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Benson?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. As far as the volume of plastic bags we find, I think it's, I think it's a fair statement to say that plastic bags are in the top 10 types of trash that we find. We do keep track of different, different kinds of things that we remove from the creek. We remove anywhere between 40 and 50 tons of litter from the creek every year, from the creeks in the city every year. But plastic bags aren't separated in that from other trash. And so, we have done some analysis of how often we find trash when we send a contractor out to a given location. We send a contractor out to pick up trash at over 1,000 different sites throughout the year. Ninety-three percent of them, we find trash, and I think a conservative estimate would be, in at least a third of those, we find plastic bags. And I can say, I've done many, many creek cleanups, and been involved with many, many beach cleanups. On the creek cleanups, I don't think I've been out on a single one where I haven't found a plastic bag. Beach cleanups can be different, because the bags blow, so when they get out on the, when they get out on the beach, they're blowing around, instead of, on the creek, they tend to get snagged on sticks, or pipes, or rocks, or something like that, and tend to stay put.
Thank you. Ms. Mario, did you, was that all your questions for Mr. Benson?
I actually had a question for him, and I know that after all these questions, Mr. Reddy will want to speak. Mr. Benson, you've been dealing with the creek habitat environment for some time, and the reason, part of the reason why we have had Measure B was that what goes into the creeks ends up in the ocean. And I know we've had a lot of folks talking, I'm sure there's some young people and others here that want to talk to us about that, but the effect of the, what we called in our report, our request here today, ambient waste getting into the ocean, could you just address that for a moment, so that we have, we recognize that we're capturing a lot of this, and gets into the landfill, which isn't all that great, but gets into landfill, as opposed to just flowing around. But when it gets into a creek, gets into the ocean, what's the effect? Where are we there?
Well, I think the, I think the council has heard a lot of testimony and past hearings about scientific studies of impacts on wildlife and so forth, from, from plastic and other debris getting into the, into the marine environment. What's clear is, we, you know, we do have, we do have a lot of trash and a lot of litter getting into the creeks. When we have rain events, all of that gets out into the ocean. That is to say, everything that we can't pick up before the rain comes. And, you know, as I mentioned, we do have, we do have contractors paid for by Measure B funds that are going in and doing additional cleanup in the creeks, and this is in addition to street sweeping and other types of trash cleanup around the city. We spend about $100,000 a year, and, like I said, remove somewhere around 50 tons of garbage a year out of the creeks. We do try to, we do try to do that. At the beginning of the rainy season, we do a complete cleanout, so that, so that we can get what's built up over the, over the dry months, before we have our first flush come through and send that out to the ocean.
Thank you. Ms. Mario, and then, Mr. Hotchkiss, and then, I know, we want to hear from Beacon.
I have a question, I think it's for Mr. Forrester, about styrofoam. I'm glad Mr. Hotchkiss brought it up. How does that break down in the ocean, or do you know how much that's recycled? Is it recyclable? And are there jurisdictions that have banned styrofoam?
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Mario, there are jurisdictions that have banned styrofoam. I don't have those numbers readily available today, I could certainly bring those back. I'd like to actually bring that information back to you in another venue on specifics of, you know, its life cycle, but I can tell you, there have been some jurisdictions that have adopted an ordinance to ban it.
Is it's made of polystyrene, and isn't that part of what's in a plastic bag? I'm not sure how much of a science head you are, but-
Polystyrene's actually, it is not what is in plastic bags. There are two different types of plastic. I'd be glad to bring you research on that. Staff had given a presentation to council some years back about the polystyrene issue, and we were directed to, to hold off for a number of reasons until, you know, for example, until we had a composting program in place to provide sufficient alternatives, but staff really has not explored that issue since we were put on hold.
Well, I don't want to complicate the matter, then. Thank you.
Mr. Hotchkiss?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Actually, I think polystyrene is about 90% air, and that's why it's so light, you know, and you, so, doesn't mean that it doesn't have other stuff in it, obviously, but you mentioned sort of the top 10, and so did Ms. King, so I'm wondering, what else is on the top 10 chart for trash?
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Hotchkiss, we also find plastic bottles, cans, cigarette butts, styrofoam, other hard plastic utensils and things from takeout food, bottles.
Sort of the stuff of 21st century lives, it's just been, and do you think some of that, because I remember in Mr. Forrester's report before, that both at parks and beaches and the waterfront, we found, I guess I would say minimal, and that's sort of been my experience, but in the creeks, there was a fair amount of, I think there were like 24 plastic bags at one cleanup you did, and it just made me wonder, could that be because we have transients living in some of those creek beds? Do you know if that's the case or not?
Well, we do have transients living in those creek beds, and we are cleaning up those areas as well. But some of the things, you know, again, with the waterfront, you've got, you've got large open spaces, so if you have a lightweight trash item, it's going to, it's going to blow out of that area pretty quickly. The creeks division does clean right along the shoreline of the beach. We're out there once a week and picking up trash. We pick up about 500 pounds of trash every week.
Yeah, my, also, I don't know if you've seen this, but I've seen seagulls sorting trash. You know, they pull stuff out, I think they're looking for hot dogs or something, speaking of hot dogs.
You must be hungry, the second time you brought up hot dogs.
I know, I must be hungry, right. Actually saw one, I, you know, it was sort of ferocious, and I charged him, and he didn't, wasn't going anywhere, so then I went after him again, and he finally disappeared. And I went in there and sat in my car, was making a phone call, I got bombed by the seagull. I had to go to the car wash, and dead serious, they're pretty smart. Anyway, I had to tell you that, so.
Thank you for that story.
I would just say, you're right about the, about the birds and the trash cans, I think the city does make an effort to try to keep lids or covers on the trash cans, so that you don't have birds distributing that, so it's not, and one of the things, when you have the really lightweight stuff, the styrofoam and the plastic bags, that's, I saw the term unintentional litter.
Right.
I think, I think that's, that's not all of what we get, some of it's intentional, for sure, but there is a lot that just gets blown out, or blows out the window of a car, or the back of a truck.
Yeah, people collect it, put it away, psh, gets blown out. I think you're right, thanks a lot.
Okay, Mr. Reddy, would you mind coming up and just, Mr. House, before you came in, explained the process at Beacon at previous Ford meetings, but just sort of explain what Beacon's able to do, and what direction you've had so far.
Okay, thank you. I think you've already got the letter from the exec director. He asked me to come, it was delayed, in Ventura County. My name's Kevin Reddy, I'm senior deputy county council. In that capacity, I represent the legal interests of Beacon, which is a joint powers agency, the Beach Erosion Authority, for Clean Oceans and Nourishment, that's made up of your city, and all the other coastal cities, and both counties, Ventura and Santa Barbara County. And the mandate of Beacon is to protect the coastline, including ocean water quality, within that two-county region. In that capacity, the Beacon Board unanimously passed a resolution asking for the support of each Beacon member agency. That's the gist of this letter here. Basically, the concept that Beacon Board wanted to pass is that it's nice if each member agency can take action themselves to control the plastic bag issue, which is a profound effect on the littoral region and the coastal environment. But they are asking for joint action by the Beacon member agencies to support Beacon in doing a joint EIR, similar to the Los Angeles County EIR that was used subsequently by both the county and the cities within the county, to promote the plastic bag ban, by both individual action and joint action. So Beacon is asking for your support in that effort, in helping us to fund the EIR, and in whatever action you can take individually, to promote this plastic bag ban.
Thank you. Any questions, although we might have questions for you a little later, too, but, yes, Mr. House?
Just, again, just take every opportunity we have, because we've really had this before us before, but today, we're really trying to get deeper into it. There have been challenges against other ordinances and other places, and I know we discussed the Manhattan Beach situation, and so, but that, that approval, if you will, of Manhattan Beach's approach doesn't, won't really apply in larger cities like the city of Santa Barbara, or if we took this, began to do this regionally, my understanding, at least from the way you've presented it to the Beacon Board, it would, this regional approach is really almost necessary in order to make sure that we get it right, and that we don't set anybody up in the, in this area up for a challenge. Is that accurate to say?
I don't want to assert your council's authority to advise you, but the advice I gave the Beacon Board was that the Manhattan Beach approach would not work on most jurisdictions larger than that, because inherent in the court decision in Manhattan Beach was that it's a very small locale, with very few major suppliers of plastic bags, and therefore, the de minimis impact there would only apply in a jurisdiction like that. That's one of the reasons why the county of Los Angeles did a full-scale EIR, which is what Beacon is proposing for its member agencies, since we represent two counties and six cities, we couldn't go under the de minimis EIR, no EIR rule that Manhattan Beach survived on. So we think the EIR is necessary, in our case, in Beacon's case, and would be a good thing for our member agencies to contribute to that, to be able to avoid that legal pitfall that might occur if we didn't do a full EIR.
Okay, great. And the letters identify as possibly as much as $6,000 to $10,000 from each agency, but maybe even a contribution from, there's some nonprofits that have shown some real interest in participating in this, and that could reduce the cost to any of us.
That's correct. The letter does go into that in detail, and Beacon's asking for your support of the program that you gave us to protect your ocean water.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Reddy. Okay, we're going to move to public comment. I have quite a few speaker slips here, as you can see, so I'm going to stay pretty strict to the two-minute item. When I call your name, if you're on deck, if you could come close to the podium, so we can keep things moving, I'd appreciate that. And then, finally, this issue, for whatever reason, is very, has very passionate responses from folks, and I want to, we all want to hear what you have to say, but I do ask that you refrain from clapping, or cheering, or booing, or anything else like that from anyone, because we really want to hear what everyone has to say, and so we can come to a good conclusion afterwards. So with that, I'd like to have Bill Collier be the first speaker, and then Mike Meshkov be afterwards. And for those of you who've never been here, there's a timer on the podium, so that shows you how much time you have left.
After me and Madam Mayor, members of the council. My name is Bill Collier, I'm the executive director of the Downtown Organization. I'm here before you today to urge you to take a pragmatic approach on the proposed plastic bag ordinance. It's easy to get caught up in the emotions of the subjects, so I encourage you to keep the business community in the forefront of your decision-making. One of the signs of success that Kathy mentioned earlier of the Downtown Organization is to see our sidewalks full of people with shopping bags in their hands. It makes me feel good, and I know it makes other merchants feel good. Many merchants use these bags as an integral form of advertising. Please don't put them in a disadvantage with other shopping districts in our community. Thank you.
Thank you. Mike Meshkov, or Meshroff, if you could pronounce that correctly, followed by Stephen Joseph.
Hi, I'm Mike Meshkov, a city resident and a voter. Dear city council members, I would like to express my opposition to the proposed ordinance regarding plastic bags. Specifically, due to such times as increased taxes and greater role of municipalities, it is not a right time to pass it on to a consumer. Furthermore, such ordinance will only, will have a negative impact on low-income and transient citizens even more. Alternative proposals following ideas, while working with commercial property owners, put clearly and visibly appealing board signs encompassing a circumference of an existing trash can, or create a mini billboard about that. Second option, create an ordinance that is directed at plastic bags producers or stores to carry biodegradable plastic bags. Third, have a citywide volunteer cleanup day on a monthly basis, or around Highway 101. Fourth, create a better awareness around local trails and creeks. But if the law passes, a city must be aware that it will be required to provide alternatives to reduce an impact. Specifically, for example, it might be required to install more trash dispensers along Cliff Drive, or Milpas, or along any commercial grocery store path. Also, maybe higher now, another park ranger would be required to drive from Henry's to Leadbetter, inspecting runoff drains following a major rain. Ironically, it would be also useful to enforce a dog-offish area where a lot of dog bags are being abandoned, and the county is not being compensated for the bags that provide. I'm out.
You have 16 seconds.
Ironically, I see more bottles on the street than plastic bags. On my way here, I saw more Subway and Taco Bell plastic bags than generic store bags, maybe due to lack of trash cans along Cliff Drive. Personal irresponsibility and no regulations.
You signed up?
I got it.
Thank you, thank you. You can finish your sentence, it's okay. Okay, it's all right. Stephen Joseph will be followed by Barbara Anderson.
Madam Mayor, members of the council, I'm Stephen Joseph, council for Save the Plastic Bag Coalition. Like to start by giving you a compliment. I've been to many city council and boards of supervisors' meetings up and down the state on this subject, and this is one of the most balanced that I've been to. I've been to some pretty wild ones. I think the worst one that we've had, we've had was Santa Cruz County, where they came out with outrageous things, and they passed a ban based upon total misinformation, but I've heard some very balanced presentations from these people who are very serious, and I'm glad to be able to give you that compliment. I came into this campaign because I was concerned about misinformation. I wanted environmental decision-making to be based on facts, not hype, not emotion, not passion, not bubble kind of mentality, and I'm hearing a lot of, you know, balance there today. But what's making me wonder is, do you really have a problem? I mean, I understand you have a solution, which is to ban plastic bags, but do you really have a problem? I'm hearing that the plastic bags that you're finding, you're finding them in very small numbers, it's very inconclusive, the litter data about plastic bags, and it's only in the top 10 items, which I assume it means it's number 10. What about the other nine items? Are you going to ban those? I mean, surely you would begin with number 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, and 9, before you get to number 10. And so, I'm really confused. You've got a balanced presentation, well, let those facts dictate your choice today, because you've heard that there really isn't a problem. How many bags are getting from Santa Barbara into the ocean? I doubt that there are very many at all. I mean, per year, how many do you think is, that is? You haven't heard any statistics about that, and I doubt that there are any, you just don't see them that often on the beach, or going into the ocean. It's just a problem that's not happening. So I just wonder whether or not you really have a problem. We did hear a lot of interesting statistics, unfortunately, they were only about plastic bags.
Please sign up.
For instance, saying that 240 million plastic bags are landfilled, but it's about 300 or 350 million pounds of paper bags that are landfilled each year. Why isn't that mentioned? Why isn't the number of paper bags in the city mentioned?
You need to sign up, please.
When you say 29 million plastic bags, what about the number of paper bags? So all I'm saying is, there needs to be balance in the approach. I do have a request, if I could just finish one-
You actually have a council member who wants to give you more time by asking you a question, so that could work out.
Well, I'm not sure about the time, but I do want to ask a couple of things. Did you, it sounds like you're sort of a pro in this area, but you said that we, this is an even balanced presentation, so, and people were factual, is that correct?
Yes, I thought today's was one of the better ones that I've heard, but what it revealed was that you actually don't have a problem.
Well, I understand what your points about 1 through 10, I was sort of thinking that myself, but some people don't, don't agree with that. Have you seen any bag bans that you thought were a good idea around the, around the state?
Well, you know, in San Francisco, they've just banned bags, and the question is coming up now, what about the tourists? You know, tourists aren't going to bring reusable bags to the city with them, and they're going to be forced to pay for bags and carry them around the city. That's not going to be something that's going to entice tourists to the area, or make them very happy when they're here.
Right.
And this, you know, on State Street today, there are quite a few tourists, including- And this, you know, on State Street today, there are quite a few tourists, including myself, and I didn't bring a reusable bag, and, you know, it's something that's not easy to, you know, explain to tourists that they should have to do that. It's maybe something rational for the locals, but not for tourists. Incidentally, while I was out there, I went to Subway for lunch, and I couldn't find anywhere to throw my trash. There are very few trash cans along State Street and around there, so.
Well, actually, we do have a lot of trash cans, but I appreciate that. Is there any place, last question, I think, that has instituted a ban and then rescinded a ban, as far as you know?
Well, yes, in Santa Cruz County, they rescinded the restaurant ban, but we had sued them over that. But the bans haven't been in effect that long, so I'm not sure that anyone's had that much experience with them. I know that there are a lot of citizens who are very upset, particularly, we've heard a lot of feedback from San Jose, a lot of feedback from San Jose, that people are upset there about the fee on paper bags. So it may be that there'll be some petitions and referenda on that issue at some point. But as I said, I do have a request, if I could.
Well, okay, make it quick. I think the mayor's getting impatient.
This is the request. I understand you're going to do an EIR if you pass this resolution today.
It's possible.
Would you make that resolution include a provision that, is it Beacon, work with us on developing the factual information about plastic and paper and reusable bags, instead of leaving us out in the cold and waiting for us to object?
Keep for your request.
It's part of the problem.
We can take that into consideration, thank you.
Francisco also has a question for you.
Okay. Thank you, Madam Mayor. Mr. Joseph, two questions first. Of the cities that have enacted bans in California, do you know how many have been or currently are in litigation over those bans?
San Francisco, San Luis Obispo, Marin County, and as of next week, Carpinteria.
Is that by you, by your organization, I mean?
Yes. But there's also, by the way, Los Angeles County, which is by Hilex Poly, but that's nothing to do with us.
Okay.
And my second question is concerning the Hilex Poly case. I don't know how familiar you are with the details about that, but is the 10 cents, if you know this, is the 10-cent bag fee being challenged only on Prop 26, or is it also on Prop 218 grounds?
I don't know.
Okay, all right. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, and welcome to Santa Barbara.
Thank you.
Okay. Barbara Anderson will be followed by, I think it's Kate or Katie Satchel-Zabriski. Kaya, sorry, I can't read your handwriting there. Go right ahead.
Madam Mayor and the members of the council, I'm the Director of Strategic Partnerships at the Orphela Foundation in Santa Barbara, California, and as you may know, we have spent the last decade, as well as over $100 million, investing in children's and families to ensure that we have a healthy and resilient community here in Santa Barbara and throughout the entire county. You have and will continue to hear today from organizations that will remind you of the harmful effects that creation and use of plastic bags have on our environment, from depleting our natural resources, polluting our oceans and streams, and releasing harmful toxins into the atmosphere. You've also heard from communities that have undertaken this dialogue and chosen to ban plastic bags and save their residents, as well as the health of their municipalities. I also recognize that some of you question the environmental impact of plastic bags and do not want to limit options of our residents to choose what is most convenient for them. You want to let the free market to decide. But unfortunately, our choices are already limited, and the free market isn't free at all. Billions of dollars are being spent every day to convince us that tap water is bad for us and that bottled water is healthier. Billions of dollars are being spent every day convincing us that plastic bags are not bad for the environment. Billions of dollars are being spent telling us to choose convenience over thoughtfulness. And a handful of corporations own our media outlets, they own our financial system, they now own our healthcare system, and they also make sure that we are limited when it comes to our choices. It's the responsibility of government to represent the interests of the people, to assure that we have the ability to make the right choices. Corporate interests are profit-driven. Government interests should be driven by public safety, health, preservation and conservation of life, and the environment. Protect our interests and ban plastic bags.
Okay, Kaya Satchel-Zabriski, and then Kelly Patterson's here. Is Kelly here? There you are. And China Sizney's here? Hi, China. Okay, so you have six minutes, because they're yielding their time to you.
Thank you. Hi, Madam Mayor, council members. Thanks again for having this issue with us of plastic bags. They really choke us up and choke our environment up, let alone getting here on time. There's a lot of trash jams in the ocean right now. I am Kaya Satchel-Zabriski with Save the Mermaids. Council members have mentioned before that this is a low-hanging fruit in Santa Barbara. You have just heard many great statistics, but these are just numbers unless you experience it. We do every day. Last Saturday, we took the kids from the School of Squash from Santa Barbara Athletic Club to the Leadbetter Beach for a beach cleanup. In one mile, we covered, we picked up 62 pounds of garbage in one hour. Much of this was plastic bags, either singular or filled with dog poop. You might be surprised that a large percentage of this garbage was found on the side of the road in gutters and drains on the walk to the beach. This is the source of our main problem. Yes, our beaches are kept clean by all the wonderful communities around Santa Barbara. However, all the single-use waste gathers in our rivers and drains which wash straight into the ocean. I spent four to five days last week just looking at where I was finding plastic bags. I also found plastic bags above the hills in Montecito while I was hiking, running around Staples Center, finding a plastic bag, I'm going to Staples. We know single-use plastic bags are not the only pollution problem in Santa Barbara, but they're a simple problem that you can solve with one vote. Initially, this might be an inconvenience for some, but soon enough, it will become a habit for our community. We know this because many other counties in California, with much less funding than our own, have proven that this is possible, and it works. We are concerned and have expressed, we know that there's been concern expressed for low-income families in Santa Barbara, and how are they going to get these reusable bags? There are many organizations in this room alone that have donated thousands and thousands of reusable bags in the last year. Many schools we visit do bag drives on a regular basis. This is not an inhibiting factor. All obstacles that have been presented in this issue can be solved very easily. Here with us today, we have brought with us representatives from the 6th Grade School of Santa Barbara Middle School, who have each taken it upon themselves to better their own home environments and spread awareness throughout their school. A few months ago, these kids joined Save the Mermaids in a class project to see how each of them could create a change in their lifestyles. They've done everything from instigating their own beach cleanups, to bringing reusable bags with their food every day, to making sure each one of their families is now carrying reusable bags. Today, they have brought letters for the city council on this issue. I have one girl, Grace, who has been nominated by the class to read her letter today.
Grace? Just pull that mic all the way down so we can hear you. Great, good afternoon.
Hi, I'm Grace. Dear city council members and Madam Mayor, I am here today to tell you that I believe that you should ban the single-use plastic bag in Santa Barbara. People think that Santa Barbara is an environmentally educated town, but we still have not banned the bag. Santa Barbara should be part of the other cities in California that have already banned the single-use plastic bag. This cause is important to me because most plastic bags end up in the ocean, and when I go swimming, I don't want to go swimming in a polluted ocean. If we ban plastic bags in Santa Barbara, our town and oceans will be so much more beautiful. Sincerely, Grace and the entire 6th Grade at Santa Barbara Middle School.
Thank you.
So thank you, guys. Therefore, Save the Mermaids and our supporting youth urge you to make a splash here and vote to ban bags.
Thank you. Jill Clotier will be followed by Ali Galcetzes. Then be followed by Tim Benson.
Hello, Madam Mayor and council members. I work at the Watershed Resource Center in Santa Barbara at a Royal Borough Beach, and we do monthly beach cleanups, as well as weekly beach cleanups with kids, K through 6th grade. We find hundreds of plastic bags throughout the year, and we have been tallying those up, and I could give you totals on that if you're interested, but we definitely, they're in the top five of the litter that we find at beach cleanups. So we just want to go on the record as supporting the bag ban. And I think it's time, and I would just love to know who's funding the Save the Plastic Bag Coalition. Thank you.
Ali Galcetzes, and you're going to have to help me with that pronunciation, followed by Tim Benson.
Hello, I'm Ali Galcetzes, and I'm here representing Alavista Surf Rider and Associated Students Environmental Affairs Board at UCSB, and I just wanted to share my support for a bag ban with a tax, or a fee on paper. And I've been working on this for a while. You've obviously heard all of the environmental reasons why we should do this, but there's also reasons that we had, that they had mentioned earlier, tourism. We don't want bags floating around on the streets to detract from like the beautiful Santa Barbara that we have, and as well as the health impacts that plastic have, and among other things. So just wanted to show my support and basically repeat something that one of the students, one of the 6th grade students had said last time that we were in here, is it just makes sense, and for a lot of reasons, and that's it. Thank you.
Tim Benson will be followed by Andy Schrader.
All right, Madam Mayor, members of the council, good afternoon, and thank you for having us to talk about this issue today. I bring before you this bag from Urban Outfitters. It is a cloth reusable bag. I bring this up to demonstrate that it's still very possible for businesses to advertise their companies through the use of bags while not compromising the health of environmentalists and their, or the goals of environmentalists and their goals to eradicate plastic in this community. I'm here from the UCSB chapter of the Plastic Pollution Coalition, a coalition made up of a number of student organizations committed to eliminating plastic from this area. It's been brought up that maybe this isn't a real problem, but I'd like to bring to the attention to the council that the landfill in Santa Maria, that is often the source of waste for many cities in this area, is scheduled to run out of room in the next five years. It seems like you and the County of Santa Barbara and the City of Santa Maria alike could save yourself the future headache and be proactive in banning these single-use plastic bags. I think there are a number of issues that have been brought up that are very worthy, but I think it's also been brought to the attention that the model that is being inspired is one that takes into the account, takes into account the rights of the grocers, the businesses, and the environmental institutions alike. So with that, I encourage you to move forward with this legislation, and thank you for your time.
Mr. Hotchkiss.
Quick question. I suspect you misspoke. You said you were against all plastic or plastic, you're just talking about plastic bags, is that right?
Plastic bags, correct.
Thank you.
Andy Schrader will be followed by, I think Andrea Left. So after Andrea, James Smallwood.
Hi, I'm Andy Schrader. I've been involved in this issue since AB 1998 failed in 2010. I urge you, first of all, I urge you to look closely at the supposed recycling of plastic bags, follow the entire recycling cycle and know where they end up, because many are simply sent to China and Mexico and burned. You've heard a lot about the environmental impacts of plastic bags in the ocean, so I want to quote the Lorax and speak for the trees. I want to address the proposed paper bags that will be left standing. I strongly encourage you to mandate the content of those paper bags. LA County and Santa Monica both have excellent definitions, bags that are not made from old-growth forests, for instance, that they are made from a minimum 40% post-consumer content and can themselves be recycled. I encourage you to go even stronger. 100% recycled material paper bags are widely available, and will encourage a market and therefore job creation for all the paper we put in our blue bins to recycle. Somebody mentioned the trash in the creek is the remains of the 21st century life. With 7 billion people and counting, every habit we adapt has a greater and greater impact on the planet. We need to move quickly toward a more sustainable lifestyle. This is an easy habit change, not the apocalypse. Cities around the world are doing it, China is doing it. I encourage Santa Barbara to ban the plastic bag. Thank you.
James Smallwood. Be followed by Bill Hickman.
Madam Mayor and members of the city council, thank you for taking another step forward in environmental stewardship. I remember years ago, when we worked together as PAC and eliminated the use of toxic pesticides in the parks, and adopted an IPM, which Carpinteria has recently looked at, and they're going to adopt a similar program as well. Let's be clear here, you know, we use pretty benign labels for our negative impact on the environment, terms like global warming and carbon footprint. I think in more truthful terms, we're talking about our toxic footprint. And it's important to eliminate as much as possible our toxic footprint, and this is another step forward in doing that. There's a estimated 100, there's an area in the Pacific Ocean called the Pacific, the Plastic Vortex. It contains about 100 million tons of toxic plastic. So these are not just plastic bags, this is, we're talking toxic. It is two times the size of Texas. Probably some of our trash is out there. I'm wondering if anybody here is going to go and clean that up, maybe somebody from the plastics industry? I'm not sure. Let's not put an environment in the first place. So thank you again for taking a step forward. 200 million tons of plastics are produced each year, less than 5% is recycled, and 10% ends up in the ocean. So this is a really good, you know, it's a step forward in not putting it out there in the environment in the first place. Thank you very much again. Thank you.
Bill Hickman will be followed by Scott Bull.
Hello, Madam Mayor and city council. My name is Bill Hickman with the Surf Rider Foundation. Thank you very much for considering this important issue. While plastic bags don't have the volume or weight of, as other items that are littered or thrown away, plastic bags do have the dubious honors of being killers of wildlife, along with being a menace in the recycling and waste stream, all the while having an easy solution in reusable bags. While Surf Rider is mainly concerned with the impact of plastic pollution in the ocean and coastal zone, I'm going to talk briefly about how plastic bag recycling is not a solution to the problems and how bags are a hassle at landfills. Santa Barbara recently started to allow plastic bags to be recycled curbside through the blue bins that are collected by Harrison and trucked down to Gold Coast Processing Facility in Ventura. I was able to take a guided tour of Gold Coast a couple of weeks ago and was impressed by the overall operation. There's a huge volume of materials being sorted by some very hard workers. It's a tough job. Gold Coast is a recycling processor that sells materials, but nothing actually gets converted back to raw materials and recycled locally. Couple of times, our tour guide mentioned that they don't care where they sell the materials to, as long as they get diverted from the landfill. Gold Coast is a single-stream recycling processor, meaning you can toss anything recyclable into your blue bin where they are co-mingled. After it's trucked to Ventura, it gets dumped onto conveyor belts and sorted by a combination of machines and human hands. The valuable items, such as plastic bottles, milk jugs, cans, and cardboard, are picked out and separated for sale. What's left over at the end of the sorting process is plastic bags, film, and low-quality paper. Since the market of recyclables collapsed, Gold Coast has to pay to have that residual plastic bags, film, and paper shipped to another processor in Riverside County. The final destination is unknown, but the guide mentioned Central America and Asia a couple of times. Again, they don't care where it goes. I encourage all of you to take a tour of Gold Coast as possible. While it's great to keep the stuff out of the landfill, these plastic bags are starting to get a big carbon footprint, which is not so sustainable. Plastic bag recycling does not work. You don't put a blue, you don't put a bag in your bin and magically transform into another bag at the store. Last year, I had the privilege of touring the Tejago's landfill at Pascalita. I was even more impressed by their facility and tidy operation.
You need to wind up, please.
Yes. Basically, plastic bags are a hassle there. On windy days, they have to put up fencing and hire people to contain them. It's an added cost, basically, to us at the end of the day. Plastic bags are not free. Please pursue the strongest reusable bag ordinance possible. Thank you very much for your time.
Scott Bull will be followed by Christine Fancher.
Madam Chair, members of the council, this is actually a very exciting time, and just I really appreciate you guys taking the time to discuss this and letting us all speak. My name is Scott Bull. I'm a Santa Barbara city homeowner and member of the Santa Barbara chapter of the Surf Rider Foundation. On behalf of Surf Rider Foundation, our Santa Barbara chapter, and over 300, or 30,000 members in the state of California, we stand in strong support of the Santa Barbara City Council to adopt an ordinance to reduce plastic and paper carryout bags at retailers within city limits. Now is the time for your leadership and action that will help reduce the amount of single-use plastics that end up in our storm drains, on our beautiful local beaches, and our oceans. Plastic bags are the most ubiquitous consumer item designated to last for minutes, but persists in our marine environment hundreds of years. I was going to go on and talk about, you know, plastics and the environment, all that, but I think you guys have heard it all so much before, but I did want to actually target something that our community partners put out, that the city of Santa Barbara uses 29 million bags per year. That's 325 bags per person per year. I know that the attorney had mentioned whether or not we have this huge epidemic of this litter that's in our environment, where it's this big problem. Oh my gosh, there's bags everywhere, but the issue really stands is that we have 20 million bags per year that are produced and wasted in Santa Barbara City. I mean, that is actually a pretty significant number. Whether or not a partial, like a fraction of those end up our oceans or our beaches or our creeks, it doesn't matter. We're still using that many bags in the city and I think that needs to be addressed. Um, the Where's Your Bag Program has been a great first step to educate shoppers and the general public, so certainly launching into a, a bag ban might be an easy fit, um, but it really is the parcel solution. You really need to go that extra step. The most effective operation, uh, option is an ordinance which levels the playing field for all retailers and helps encourage the use of reusable bags. Our community will adapt and change their behavior. Each of us realizes that we are doing just one simple thing that collectively makes a huge impact. It is about responsibility. So Santa Barbara City Council, you have this golden opportunity to join the many other communities that have taken the leadership to address the bag pollution and take pleasure in the reputation nationwide. You will also pleasure from the appreciation of our local citizens that you care about our coast and ocean. Thank you guys very much.
Christine Fancher will be followed by Isaac Hernandez. Then it'll be Nancy Black, Molly McDonough, John Dixon and Eric Cardenas.
Hello, and thank you for listening us to, to us today. I'm just speaking for myself. I'm a thirty-three-year resident here so far and a homeowner. My view is that the number one reason to have, um, to stop the plastic bags is large sea life and microscopic sea life are dying from our plastic pollution as well as human health. Number two, grocery association is for this. Can't imagine it being easier. Number three, canvas and paper bags, uh, are always going to be available and we can still print Macy's logo on these. Plastic sucks. Thank you.
Isaac Hernandez will be followed by Nancy Black.
Oh, I want, I wanted to make a point that one bag can kill a turtle, a fish, a plastic fish. Um, and if you don't see a problem, I want to speak for that turtle that we could save their life with just taking one bag out of the ocean. Um, I believe in personal responsibility besides, but I think the government, we, we can do whatever is possible to help that one fish, that one turtle, that one dolphin. I think, uh, one of the things that I'm doing as personal responsibility is I'm writing, I wrote a play that we're performing this weekend. This is one of the props. It's about the plastic in the ocean. It's about us all being responsible. Plastic bags is only one of the problems. So I, I totally believe in that, but I also believe in the government. I believe that Santa Barbara is a leader in the environment. Selma Rubin, rest in peace, show us the way. Let's keep her life alive and let's, let's show to the rest of the world what's right that we can take even if it's just one bag out of the environment. Also, speaking of the recycling of the plastic bags, I've done a lot of environmental stories and not just a prop maker, um, and I interviewed, and I know that it's possible to recycle plastic bags, eco-cycle embaldered acid, but they have to be completely clean and immaculate and then you can down, actually downcycle them into other products like, uh, playgrounds and sewer holes, but that's the only way. So I believe that the, the way that we're doing it right now, if it's the time, the timing of, oh, you can recycle your plastic bags, let's not buy them. I have some considerations about that because I know that it's not possible to recycle them unless they're completely clean. Thank you very much for your consideration and let's, let's be the leaders in the world. Thanks.
Nancy Black. Nancy here?
Yeah.
Okay. Oh, yeah. Molly McDonough. Molly here? Come on up, Molly. Be followed by John Dixon.
Madam Mayor, City Council members, I didn't bring anything prepared to talk about today. I'm here because I've been a Santa Barbara resident for a long time. I don't have to remind you that Santa Barbara led the environmental movement back in eighty-nine with the oil spill. I'm here because I am a member of Channel Keeper, of Surf Rider, of Santa Barbara Urban Creeks and a number of other environmental organizations that are dedicated to protecting our, our precious coastlines and wilderness areas. I'm here because I'm an ocean swimmer. I'm out there almost every day swimming along East Beach and Miramar Beach and on Sundays when I get to relax a little bit, there's a lot of children out there and every time I go down to the beach and I see those children, there's always, always, plastic bags that are in their, they're little children and I don't, that's not the legacy that I want to leave for them either in our oceans or our generation. We have the power to change this now. I think it's our duty to change it now and preserve Santa Barbara's delicate marine areas and coastal gifts for ourselves and for future generations. I'm also, I live around the corner from John's Tri-County Market. I've got a Where's Your Bag and I often forget, you know, I'll walk around the corner and I'll get my little things and I'll need another bag because I didn't get that bag of apples. It's no problem to pay ten cents, although he doesn't charge me yet, to ask for a bag. Thank you for your time today. Please take this under serious consideration.
Thank you. John Dixon.
Good afternoon, Madam Mayor and Council members. I'm John Dixon, owner of Tri-County Protus and, um, been participating in the Where's Your Bag campaign, as you know. We encourage the use of reusable bags, as you've just seen, and, uh, Tri-County Protus are a program where we donate five cents to local charity for each reusable bag a customer brings to our store. Excuse me. The date we have donated more than seven thousand dollars to the local charities through this program. Since starting the program, we have increased reusable bag use by sixty percent. However, I do realize that, um, however, I do realize unfortunately, other stores have not been as enthusiastic in this effort. While I do not support the banning of plastic bags for the simple reason as not for more government regulations and fees to consumers, however, I do understand the desire to keep our environment as clean as possible and I can support that issue. This should be a statewide ordinance or at the very least a Santa Barbara county-wide ordinance and not just the city of Santa Barbara. If, capital if, this is going to move forward, I would hope the following issues are considered. This should cover all retailers, not just grocery stores. You've got a lot of small liquor stores, convenience stores in this town, especially on Milpo Street. They're handing out those little black plastic bags. Those are blowing all over the streets. I bet you could find a hundred of those if you ever find one Tri-County Protus bag, but that's an issue, so it should be all the stores. I think, um, you know, the stores must charge a fee for the reusable bags, but they can't just give them away unless it's under a special promotion because, you know, larger chain stores have the buying power where they can buy reusable bags at a fraction of the cost of what its independents can buy. So if they were able to give them away for free, it would be kind of an unfair competitive advantage, so I hope that's in there. And the other question, a few others, will a fee be, uh, on all paper bags, applied to all the bags, like for instance, as I can show you, are consumers going to pay ten cents for this, ten cents for this and ten cents for this and ten cents for this? Is it applied to just any size bag? Those would be some questions I'd have and how's the issue going to be enforced, making sure the high-volume grocery stores don't give away free bags just to lure you into the store?
You wind up, please.
And lastly, you know, grace period, I hope there would be at least a nine to twelve month grace period, is we usually buy about a year's worth of bags at a time to get them at the best price we can. Those are some of my considerations, so thanks for your time.
Thanks for the list. Uh, Mr. White has a question for you, Mr. Dixon.
Thank you. Um, you, I, I didn't understand your, your point about the reusable bags in large stores and the unfair advantage that they could have. Could you describe that a little more slowly, please?
Yeah, my point was would larger, would anybody for that matter, is the ordinance going to speak to, you have to charge for reusable bags, you can't just give them away, unless it was like a coupon or promotion or event, but in general, say Albertson says, you know, or Vaughn's says, you know what, come on in, we're going to give away free bags this month, which to me would be a little bit of an unfair advantage if they were able to give away free bags and they would just eat the cost. Okay.
Eric Cardenas and then Nancy Black, I think, came back in. Yeah, and then Erica Aguilera will be the last speaker.
Good afternoon, Madam Mayor, members of the city council. Thanks for having us here again. My name is Eric Cardenas with Loatria Eco Lifestyle and Services Company here in Santa Barbara. Um, I wanted to first start by appreciating the work of the Where's Your Bag Campaign, Kathy King, who's been doing this for some time, um, and the various community partners who have stepped up to the challenge over the course of the last couple of years in providing that first step, that education, the incentives, the partnerships with various nonprofits and businesses in the community to start taking a stab at this issue, which is so important and which so many other jurisdictions have been working on for a very long time, as you know. And at this council, for many, over the course of many hearings, that has always been said, well, why can't we work in collaboration with other, uh, community organizations? That has happened. You've done the preemptive work and in my, my opinion respectfully, there comes a time when that gentle encouragement and those partnerships coupled with some common sense action on the, on the side of government really has the opportunity and the ability to make change happen a little more quickly. Um, and so I encourage you to take that step today. I believe it was council member Hotchkiss who was asking, uh, Mr. Benson about, uh, the statistics, the top ten of what was being found in the creeks. And Mr. Benson rattled off a bunch of different plastic items, plastic bottles, uh, throwaway silverware from, uh, fast food establishments, um, a, a series of other things, any of which we could be potentially taking action on. Those are all, in my opinion, impactful to the environment. There are negative harms associated with those. What we're talking about today is one of those and one that's very important and one that's prevalent. Um, an, an item that is used for a couple of minutes, thrown away, maybe recycled, what happens when that's recycled? We don't necessarily always know if it's actually recycled or burned or something else. Point is, it's the sign not necessarily, or maybe in addition to 21st century life, that's one indicator, but it's also a sign of an overconsumptive society. And we need to start taking common sense first steps and I believe that this is one. You guys have a golden opportunity to take some action today. Common sense government regulation coupled with the partnerships, um, that you guys have helped spearhead, let's take some action on, on banning the bag today. Thank you very much.
Nancy Black.
Thank you for, um, taking me even though I, I came in late. Um, I'd like to speak on behalf of myself as a parent and a mother and of the kids at Open Alternative Middle School, um, who have, uh, written a play with this as their subject. Uh, it goes on this weekend and, um, you know, my son, who's thirteen and in that class, is also participating in the green film shorts with this as his subject. And, um, banning the bag, I know a group of kids who are very passionate about this. It's hard for them to sit in these seats. They're down in the car. That's where I went. I have three kids waiting in the car and, um, they really care about this. This is their future. It's not just about bags for them. So I want to thank you for considering this, for being on the forefront of cities that are considering taking this type of action. Uh, it takes courage and I would thank you for that kind of courage and I want to thank you for my kids sitting in the car and for the kids here and all the kids. Thank you. Thank you.
Erica Aguilera.
Thank you for letting me speak even though I signed up late. My name's Erica Aguilera. I'm the chair of the UCSB Plastic Pollution Coalition and I really felt I needed to address you. So I just wanted to let you know a little bit about what's going on at UCSB. So the UCSB Plastic Pollution Coalition is a coalition of every single environmental group on campus, all right? So we boast maybe, so there's eight groups, thousands of people that we are reaching on a daily basis with this stuff. Um, so approximately eight, um, there's about eighteen thousand people that go to UCSB, five thousand of which signed a petition saying they don't want plastic bags. So we're acting on this. We're actively acting on this and we worked with a bookstore and the bookstore is no longer going to give plastic bags to our students. We're going to have compostable bags. And in fact, this has been such a, a step in the right direction that I've had schools from around the country like blowing up my phone, blowing up my emails, saying, how did you do it? Like, we want to do this too. University of Georgia, Penn State, like University of Washington, I've been in Campus Progress, Huffington Post, like people are excited about this. They want this to happen. They see this as a good thing and I really think since we're being cutting edge and we're being progressive that you guys should be too. Like, we're setting the example and we want to be proud of what Santa Barbara does and we're proud of what UCSB does, so we think you should, you know, go in the right direction, do what's right for us, for my, for my future and for my kids so that they can have the same beautiful memory, memories of the coast that I did and enjoy the same beautiful beaches that I do all the time. Like, they shouldn't, that shouldn't be taken away from them and that's what we're fighting for and that's what we're passionate about. So I hope you guys see that and really move in the right direction for us. So, thank you.
Thank you, everyone. That concludes public comment and it's to the council. Don't all speak at once. Mr. Rouse.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I had a couple of questions actually for Mr. Wiley regarding the legal status of some of the activities around the state. I know that there are a couple of things pending and how that may or may not relate to what we're talking about today.
Mr. Wiley.
Madam Mayor, Councilmember, um, Councilmember Rouse, yes, there, as several of the speaker have mentioned, there are several lawsuits pending involving, uh, city and county ordinances banning plastic bags. By and large, and, you know, we can, in our office, tried to do some research on this. There isn't one particular location where you can track it all down and some of these things are only a week, some of the litigation's only a week, a few weeks old, but, uh, there are probably somewhere between six and twelve lawsuits around the state of California involving state law issues, uh, state constitutional issues at times, uh, and these bag ordinances. By and large, they mostly appear to be SEQA challenges and, um, as long as we're on that subject, I, I think it's fairly accurate to say that the state of the law on that now is somewhat settled that unless you're a city like Manhattan Beach, uh, you should probably look seriously at preparing an EIR for a bag ordinance. If, if you're a city considerably larger than Manhattan Beach with, uh, considering an ordinance maybe possibly broader than Manhattan Beaches and, and you have a, a retail, uh, base in your city larger than in Manhattan Beach, you might want to seriously look at preparing an EIR for an ordinance. And of course, one of the reasons behind that is under SEQA, uh, the, the test for the inadequacy of an EIR is a substantial evidence test, whether the city council finds whether there is substantial evidence to support the conclusions of the EIR. And anything less than an EIR is what's called a fair argument test. If, if the people who believe an EIR should have been prepared can state a fair argument, not necessarily one that the judge agrees with, but at least a fair argument that an EIR should have been prepared, then an EIR should have been prepared. As I said, that's most of the litigation. I, I understand, for example, San Francisco recently saw a SEQA challenge to their amendment to their ordinance, Santa Cruz as well, I believe. Uh, Long Beach, uh, recently, uh, was challenged on a SEQA basis and it's my understanding from talking to the Long Beach city attorney that's handling the case that they're probably going to be able to resolve that by doing further environmental review on their ordinance. Uh, a few cities, um, again, I think San Francisco have seen challenges based on, uh, the fact that, uh, they're regulating restaurants and of course restaurants are pretty extensively regulated by the state health regulations and I think the assertion there is that the state health regulations preempt any local regulations. So I think, uh, if I'm not mistaken, uh, San Francisco, possibly Santa Cruz, was challenged on that basis. I, I, I don't believe San Luis Obispo, I think it's their Integrated Waste Management Authority. I think that was a SEQA challenge. The biggest one that, uh, on the horizon in terms of litigation that I think is going to maybe provide some answers is the, the Prop 218 challenge to the county of Los Angeles' ordinances. And I know people characterize it as a Prop 26 challenge. It really, I've read the briefs on it and all the pleadings and it's really more of a Prop 218 challenge and of course that's from, Prop 218 is from nineteen ninety-six and the assertion is that the fee, the mandatory fee on paper bags is a, is a hidden tax, is truly a, a tax by another name. And, uh, as has been mentioned, that's scheduled for a decision this Thursday in Los Angeles' Superior Court. And again, I, I talked to the attorneys involved and they're, they're pretty clearly indicating that either way there's going to be appeal to the Court of Appeal. So I think of all the litigation on this, that's probably the one to watch and to one, to see how it, uh, it deals with the LA County ordinance.
And in that case, Mr. Wiley, was an EIR performed? This is outside of the EIR?
My understanding that, that LA County did have an EIR performed and they don't, they don't- My understanding that LA County did have an EIR performed, and they don't have a CQ cause of action. They're not being challenged on CQ, they're being challenged on Prop 218.
And is there assumption then, what you said, I'm clear then, that either prevailing, or the side that does not prevail is likely challenged, is that what they were telling you?
Yeah. And the thing about this LA County lawsuit is it's what lawyers call a case of first impression. It's really, I would see this as a test case by the plaintiff, apparently a manufacturer of plastic bags, or is it paper? I can't remember which. But it is a North Carolina manufacturer, and I believe they're looking at this as a test case. As I say, they would be likely to take it to the Court of Appeal if they don't prevail at the trial court level.
And these cases, my last question is that this applies all class of stores, so large, small, grocery, non-grocery, retail, clothing, whatever, that's not spelled out in these laws or these suits of restrictions? So if you charge for a bag, that would fall under that, or if it's a mandatory charge, I suppose?
Right. I don't, in the case of LA County's ordinance, I don't think the lawsuit depends on the scope of their ordinance, how, which stores they impact. Although, I'm not sure if this is your question, I've seen a lot of different ordinances, and there have been a lot of different approaches in terms of how a city regulates. Some cities only regulate the larger stores, some step into it, they'll start with only the larger stores, say chain grocery stores. They'll define the store by square footage and by sales volume, which in effect means a chain grocery store. But then they'll phase in medium-sized stores and pharmacies. By and large, the, in my experience or what I've seen, the biggest concern has to do with what are called mom and pop stores. And generally, those are either not regulated, or they come at the end of a long phase-in period for an ordinance.
I guess what I could have asked is, have you seen an unassailable ordinance crafted yet?
We just don't know. I think this LA, the CQ, I think questions have been answered by and large, particularly if you're preparing EIR. You can, Manhattan Beach decision by the California Supreme Court represents that rule, that principle. I don't personally believe the health code challenges to the restaurant regulations don't particularly make sense to me as a lawyer. So I'll be, you know, if a city were to choose to regulate restaurants, I'd be concerned about that, but most cities aren't doing that. The big one really is this Prop 218, and there just aren't answers at this point at all.
Thank you.
Mr. Hodgkins?
Thank you.
Mr. Wiley, to continue on just what Mr. Rouse was talking about, at one point, you had said that, one way or another, this is probably going to get appealed up the ladder, and then it might be as much as 18 to 24 months before this is settled. That's a guess, I understand, but let's assume that that happens. How would that affect whatever might be done here today? Are we basically going to be in suspension?
Well, it would depend on what the council decides to do, but let me just say, the County of LA could easily be looking at having their ordinance invalidated this Thursday morning. The judge could take the case under submission. I wouldn't be surprised if he does, but it's set up for a decision this Thursday morning. And in effect, LA County, by this time next week, LA County could find itself without their bag ordinance because the judge rules it unconstitutional. And I'd have to say, I could, I can't really predict. I've looked, I've read the briefs. It's a first, case of first impression, so it's going to be up to the judge. If the county does find its ordinance declared unconstitutional, I'm sure they'll appeal it to the Court of Appeal, and it'll just be a big question mark for all of us other cities in terms of that LA County approach until there's a Court of Appeal decision. I know in our office, you know, we've always got two or three appeals going at any one time through the Court of Appeal. We've got one scheduled for decision this month, and it's been 14 to 16 months since that case was decided in Superior Court.
Also to clarify, when you say LA County, it's just the unincorporated areas of LA County, it's not the 88 cities, although Santa Monica and I guess one or two others have a ban, but most of the cities do not, correct?
That's correct. And yeah, just to be clear, when a county does an ordinance, their ordinances can only apply to the unincorporated areas. They don't have the ability to pass an ordinance applicable within the boundaries of an incorporated city. And yes, in LA County, it's my understanding, Santa Monica, Long Beach...
Manhattan Beach.
Well, yes, Manhattan Beach. But in terms of the LA County model, the ban on plastic, the fee on paper, that would be Santa Monica, Pasadena, Long Beach, and then LA County.
Thank you.
Mr. White?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Well, that answered a portion of my questions. I understand Cart Maria has approved the ordinance or sort of the concept that's being talked about today. How about, how about the County of Santa Barbara and the City of Galena? Are those, is that anywhere in the works in those two places? Maybe Mr. Reddy would be able to comment about the county.
Mr. Reddy?
County of Santa Barbara supported Beacon's proposal that an EIR be done, and that EIR would be usable. With Beacon as the lead agency, the EIR would be usable by any of the member agencies as responsible agencies, in the same way that Los Angeles County did the EIR as the lead agency for the benefit of those 88 cities as responsible agencies. So the 88 cities in Los Angeles County can use the county's EIR to pass their own ordinance within their jurisdiction. That was the plan in Los Angeles counties, and that's what Beacon is also proposing that we do an EIR for our member agencies, including you, to use. And so the County of Santa Barbara has supported that proposal, they just declined for budgetary reasons to help pay for that EIR.
Okay, so then...
And Galena is another member agency of Beacon also. I have not heard any action by them.
Okay. And so the Beacon concept is one where a number of jurisdictions would contribute to the cost of an EIR?
Right.
Is that right? But, and so that's just, that is just, and information is coming to the jurisdictions, and you're just waiting back to hear how that works?
Well, no. The information is coming to the jurisdictions, but the EIR is framed as we as the lead agency with our member agencies, including the City of Santa Barbara, as responsible agencies using the EIR to take action within their own jurisdiction.
Great. Thank you. Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you.
Mr. House?
Thanks, Madam Mayor, and thanks to everyone who's come and spoken to us today. Just, I really want to be clear because it's important that we communicate, as Mr. Reddy's doing really accurately, what's happened at the Beacon level, and then with the county. And very specifically, the unanimous support of the Beacon members were to support and endorse efforts to ban and/or restrict single-use bags by Beacon member agencies, other government agencies within the counties of Santa Barbara and Ventura, and other citizen initiatives to limit the adverse impact of single-use bags on ocean's environment and near-shore environments. So it was, that was the nexus for the consideration, and that was unanimously voted on by the board. And then secondly, to really encourage these educational campaigns for voluntary use of reusable shopping bags. And lastly, and this goes to this point, to seek support from member agencies and other agencies within the counties of Santa Barbara and Ventura for Beacon to pursue a regional environmental impact report for the ban and/or restriction of single-use bags. So that's the actual language. And indeed, it was written that way, the discussion went around it. There were other communities like Ojai and others that aren't even in Beacon that may want to benefit from participating, and there may be others who would want to contribute even financially. As we now know, there are some nonprofits that are willing to step or show an interest in stepping up to assist in covering the cost, which by the way, is not all that extraordinary. I mean, we're talking probably $60,000, $80,000, or some number like that for the entire report, maybe a little bit more, but using some of the other model, some of the other environmental work that's already been done, so don't have to reinvent the whole wheel. So that was the idea. And then the county has unanimously, as Mr. Reddy just said, supported the concept of doing a regional EIR. And I know they were off budget for, with that request, so they didn't fund it. There were some things, I just want to be sure of, just that I think should be included here from our discussion so far, and I appreciate the presentation that came forward earlier, really to be wise about this and pragmatic as well, so that we participate in a regional approach to the environmental impact report to cut costs, and to also look at this, you know, more globally, not just from the city's perspective alone. That we recognize that there, the preemption by the state for the health, with the health laws regarding restaurants, and that we're mindful of that, that we, that we don't necessarily, at least the ordinance committee would consider this, we don't necessarily define exactly how the paper bag fee would be used, so we don't step across that Prop 26 line, and that there's a, that WIC recipients, the low-income folks, you know, are offered those bags for free, that that would actually be something that would be included in the ordinance. And lastly, that there be a phased approach. This has a lot to do with this leveling the playing field, and we would be mindful about that. Those are important considerations for us in going to ordinance committee. And so I know there's others that want to weigh in on this, but for the sake of our moving this forward, I would like to go ahead and make a motion right now, so we can be discussing the motion here and be really constructive with our comments, that we initiate a process to replace the Where's Your Bag ordinance that was started, if you will, back in July, that we actually initiate a single-use bag ordinance and direct ordinance committee to review the current information available regarding the regulation of single-use plastic and paper bags, including but not limited to the recently passed San Luis Obispo County plastic bag ban, and return it with a recommended, return with a recommended ordinance for council approval. And I include in my motion the things that I mentioned just a moment ago, and I'll be glad to help our secretary in getting those five specific things that I would include in the motion I mentioned a moment ago.
There's a second?
So the motion is in lieu of the current direction of replacing the Where's Your Bag mandatory ordinance to instead initiate a single-use bag ordinance that would ban plastic and put a fee on paper.
Mm-hmm.
I want to be clear about what you're doing here. That would apply to basically what the recommendations from the staff presentation, so apply to all supermarkets, pharmacies, large stores, and convenience stores, have a phase-in approach with the large stores first. Exemptions would include the product bags for meat, vegetables, and bulk items, exemption for restaurants, exemptions for newspaper bags, exemption for prescription medication bags, exemption for dry cleaning bags, there'd be an exemption for a fee from someone involved in WIC and related food programs. We would agree with moving forward with Beacon as the lead agency in conducting an EIR, and encourage other Beacon agencies to participate, I assume? I'm helping you with your motions, you can tell.
You're doing a really great job.
Yeah, I thought so.
That's good.
And I think as part of this is to also specifically look at the, I think it's the Prop 218 concern of the LA County ordinance, and we'll know more after Thursday about what that really entails, but that has to do with the fee on the paper, not all the other items. Did I miss anything else?
That was really complete.
Was that a real great motion of yours, Grant?
That's the reason I'm putting it out there, so we get it held down, and so that's my motion. Thank you.
Okay, is there a second to that motion?
Second.
Okay.
Madam Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Francisco?
That was an admirable restatement of Councilmember House's motion. And I wondered, but I wasn't clear about the part about the Where's Your Bag campaign.
The point was to not have staff take more additional time on creating a mandatory Where's Your Bag campaign ordinance. That was the original, so instead of doing two, stop doing that and instead work on this.
Not to eliminate the Where's Your Bag campaign?
No, 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 no. It was the, no, no. Of course, keep going with the voluntary and education component, all of those things. That's currently in place. The direction from last July, as I remember, well, actually, there were two things. One is to create a mandatory Where's Your Bag ordinance, and the second one was to put the actual item that's now on a motion into a November 2013 ballot. So to not do that and instead do this, but everything else stays the same. Okay, to the motion then. Mr. Francisco, did you have other things? Your light's on, or did you want to?
Yes.
Okay. Go right ahead.
Thank you very much. And thank you to everyone who came out here today and is enduring our hard wooden benches for this long discussion. I wanted to talk, I wanted to step back just a little bit from our focus exclusively on the issue of plastic bags, because there's a much larger issue at stake here. And I know that we have a lot of very environmentally aware and knowledgeable people in this room, so I'm sure for many of you, this will not be news. But I wanted to talk a little bit about why plastic is so pervasive in our lives, and why it's not going away, and what kind of implication that has for the long term. Plastic was originally introduced back in the 19th century, and people were ecstatic about plastic and its possibilities. One of the uses, for instance, was to replace tortoise shell. Tortoises were happy about that. Another was to replace ivory that was used for piano keys. I've read that during the 19th century, as many as 4,000 elephants a year were hunted for their tusks just for piano keys in England. So I'm sure the elephants were very happy when celluloid was invented and later surpassed by acrylics. All of those uses, and many, many more, thousands more, are with us today, whether it's medical technology, transportation, and plastic has many, many environmentally useful benefits. The only reason that the automakers were able to achieve some of the mileage efficiencies that were regulated was because of the substitution of plastic from metal in automobiles. Boeing's latest airliner, the Dreamliner, has a plastic composite material, plastic fuselage, instead of an aluminum fuselage, and that saves an enormous amount of jet fuel. So plastics are going to be with us everywhere. Everyone in this room probably has plastic on them right now, whether it's a cellphone or many, many other things that we use every day. So the long-term problem is really, how do we, how do we use plastic in such a way that it does not harm us, so it does not harm the environment in general? And that solution is likely not going to be crafted in this room. Fortunately, the industry is very aware of this problem. The plastic manufacturers want to stay in business, and people are working on, scientists and engineers are working on biodegradable plastics all over the world. And that ultimately is where this problem is going to be solved. The other thing I would like to talk about is at the government level, the real solutions for these kinds of problems, again, are not going to come at the level of local government. And I'll just give you one example. Germany has enacted a program to incentivize, heavily incentivize, completely recyclable packaging. I've heard different estimates of what percentage of our waste stream is comprised of packaging, and I've seen varying estimates, but it's huge. A quarter to a third of all the waste stream is packaging. Those are the kinds of changes that you can really only implement at a state level or a national level. Those are going to be the really significant improvements to the environment. I'd also like to talk a little bit about the idea of educational programs, because ultimately, in a free society, what we want is educated citizens who are capable of making their own informed decisions. And I'd like to read to you a quote from a book by Susan Frankel called "Plastic: A Toxic Love Story." She said, "The frustrating thing about watching the bag wars over the past three years has been seeing how politics reaches for the easy answers, using policies that aren't very effective in making people change the way they think. Fees and public education help nurture a shared value of reuse. By contrast, bans may capitalize on and reinforce people's reflexive distaste for plastics without encouraging them to question their reliance on single-use bags of any sort." And of course, she was talking about paper bags there, but I think we could broaden that to a general discussion of how do you create a culture of reuse? Some of that is going to happen at the government level, a lot of it's going to happen in the world of science and engineering, but the most important thing is that we as individuals begin to think in that way. To me, that is far, far more important. And... And I believe that ultimately, that is the way we will solve this problem. Now, obviously, the reason that governments, and the reason that the industry is reacting to this is because of the passionate beliefs of peoples, such as everyone in this room, that the environment must be protected. I want to see us do that in a rational way that makes sense for this city. I'm well aware that there are sufficient votes on this council to ban plastic bags, I have no doubt about that. I am encouraged to see that my fellow council members seem to be interested in pursuing a regional approach to this problem. So what I would like to suggest is that I think that the direction forward from here is not simply to say, we, the city of Santa Barbara, are going to enact a bag ban. I think since we've had demonstrated interest from other cities and counties in the region, and since we also have, as Mr. Wiley has pointed out, a very significant lawsuit against Los Angeles County right now, that I for one would like to know a little bit more about, and how that's going to turn out, because one of the things, if, if the suit against the county succeeds, there will undoubtedly be a follow-on lawsuit that will seek for the county to return every dime that's been collected. And of course, the county never received any of that money, so that money is going to be straight out of their general fund, and I do not want to see us in that position. So what I would suggest, and what I would support, if the full council's willing to go along with this, is that rather than pursuing our own individual ban entirely at our risk, and without knowing at this point even how many of the members of Beacon are willing to contribute to the EIR, what I would propose is that we work to craft an identical ordinance, we find out how many people are really going to pony up for the EIR and when, and that that should be, perhaps that should be the province of an ad hoc committee. But there needs to be, I believe, a true regional approach, not carpentry going off on their own, not us going off on our own. We've heard the interest from the entire region, let's actually work together to get people to make this happen at the same time, and let's go into it knowing that not only do we have a commitment from other jurisdictions, in theory, that they're actually going to support, they're actually going to contribute to funding the EIR, and also, I think we have a great interest in having a uniformity of this type of regulation across all the neighboring jurisdictions, so that we make sure that we are not disadvantaging our own merchants against other jurisdictions that may say, yeah, we're going to do this one of these days. I would like to see all of us, if we're going to do this, let's all move forward together regionally, and let's all contribute. Thank you.
A question before I turn it over about your suggestion.
Sure.
Is that meaning that every Beacon jurisdiction would have to abide by the ordinance put together by Beacon's EIR, or however that works, in order for us to agree to it?
What I would like to see is a collaborative effort among the jurisdictions. I don't think, I mean, I think the proposal that you and Councilmember House have brought forward is essentially modeled on the LA County ordinance and similar ordinances.
Okay, and so, go ahead.
I think there's enough commonality of interest here that a generic ordinance that would be suitable for all of the jurisdictions that are members of Beacon could be crafted.
And given that Carpentrya just adopted an ordinance that's frankly different, then how does that figure into your regional thought process?
We'll see what happens after the lawsuit with Carpentrya, but I would love to see Carpentrya come along with this. I think that there, I frankly do not understand their decision to include restaurants in this, and I think it was a wise approach that's been suggested here, to leave restaurants out of it, because that's just a problem area. But other than that, I think that, you know, Carpentrya has gone ahead, and we may not be able to work anything out with them. But I think there is an opportunity for all the rest of the jurisdictions within Beacon to move forward together.
Just for clarification, Mr. Reddy, what's the timeline for Beacon? I mean, obviously, EIRs would take a while. If we did ours, it would be several months at the very least, I know, so...
The timeline is not as long as you'd think, because we're planning on using the existing EIRs from the other jurisdictions, including Los Angeles. And in answer to your question or comment about the uniform ordinance, that's the plan, that Beacon would put together a uniform ordinance, because you have to use something as the thing that's being studied for EIR.
Exactly.
So Beacon would put together a uniform ordinance, and right now, we're looking at the Los Angeles model being that, and we might modify that because of the Hylex-Poly suit, and, you know, the mitigation measure in that one to prevent impact on the forest was that you have the fee for the paper-based bags. If you just change that from being a fee to being 100% post-consumer recyclables, then you get out of the Hylex-Poly Prop 218 lawsuit.
Well, we don't know the answer to exactly that yet.
That's what we'd be studying, though.
That's what you'd be, so, does the motion that's on the floor contradict your process in any way? Meaning, the type of things that we added here, I think, is within the general purpose of what it is that you would be doing.
My only comment would be duplicative of ours, in that we are already planning on putting together an ordinance that would be similar to Los Angeles', we'd gladly cooperate in that effort. That's what Beacon's plan would be. If the city of Santa Barbara would like to take the lead on that, we could use the ordinance that your ordinance committee uses as a basis for ours. It fits in, is the answer.
Okay, so, I think the, because the ordinance, the motion also includes listing Beacon as the lead agency for the environmental review process, so that means there obviously is some back and forth between exactly what the ordinance looks like, that the environmental review is faced.
Yes, a cooperative effort would work, and that seems to be what you have.
Right, okay, and I think, Mr. Wiley, I think the motion, okay, I just want to make sure we're not, the motion on the floor doesn't preclude you from doing what you need to do, because we added, we wanted to add Beacon and look at this regionally, but initiate something, because I think other cities frankly are looking to this city to get things started. They want to see what Santa Barbara's going to do, if Galita wants to know what Santa Barbara's going to do before they do anything, and I'm sure other cities are thinking the same, as well as the county. So, so in some ways, we do need to step up and, and do something first in order to get others to join up, join up.
Thank you for bringing me up. I wanted to point out that what Beacon's proposing is exactly what Councilmember Francisco is proposing also.
Okay. Okay, Ms. Murillo.
I thank Mr. Francisco for his comments, and I do hope that the plastics industry is working on making products that are not harmful to the environment. But what I'm hearing is that if we send it to our ordinance committee, that will be enough time to see the legal, some of the legal matters resolved. I have a big concern about exposure to litigation, and, but I do trust that the ordinance committee and our city attorney will be able to craft something that will keep us out of legal hot water. I believe, I was elected to lead, and I think the city should show leadership in this arena. I believe city of Santa Barbara, plastic bags, single-use bags get into the, I know they get into the creek, and they must get into the ocean, our shoreline, the channel, and some of them must make their way to the Pacific Chire. As a reporter, I wrote stories and produced radio stories about the quality of the ocean and its decline, and it was one of the most depressing subjects that I had to cover, other than children drowning and, and, you know, just the, the sad realities of our human existence. And I support what the mayor and Councilmember House have, have put forward. I know that the Save the Plastic Bag Coalition is funded by people who manufacture bags, and I appreciate that you're protecting those jobs. I don't want to see people lose their jobs. One of the main reasons I don't like smart meters is because people are going to be put out of work. But, you know, the manufacturers of DDT had to go out of business because it wasn't good for the environment. I'm glad that Beacon is involved. It, it seems like what Mr. Francisco is saying is, and what we're trying to do, that we can still do a collective effort. The Grocers Association is here, thank you so much for your input. The health of the ocean is, is more important than my convenience, certainly, and our, a few more dimes when I forget my bags, and I forget them all the time. So I seconded the motion, and I maintain that seconding, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. White?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'm not, first of all, I also appreciate Mr. Francisco's comments. I think that they really did, do address several aspects of this problem that we all are aware of, and that also frustrate us, that we don't see action on an international level, national level, state level, et cetera, at the big levels. We see more gridlock that infuriates us and obviously hurts us. So I really appreciate that you framed it in a way that, that is appropriate to the scale of the problem and to the scale of the solutions. And we do try, at the local level, to, I mean, it's like homelessness is another area, where we are dealing with symptoms of problems, and we do a heroic job of it, but it definitely, the, the, the efforts are dealing with symptoms and not with, and often with many, with the, often not the causes. I'm curious whether Mr. Francisco's comments, how that jives with the motion that's in front of us? How, the Beacon, the regional approach, does that mean that we would have a unanimous, or at least a large majority of council supporting the motion? The regional approach is clearly a better one, so I'm curious on that front. Or are there tweaks and so forth that are, you're suggesting, Mr. Francisco, that would make this a wider-based?
I appreciate that question, Mr. White. That's why I asked Mr. Reddy if the motion contradicted what Beacon was trying to do. I think we were just putting components of a process, and then it was also linking it to Beacon on making sure they were the lead agency for the environmental review, which we would have to do anyway, and that would, and then, and also, in the motion is support for the regional approach and addressing the other jurisdictions. So I think the motion addresses all the comments we're hearing. I was a little specific in the kinds of exemptions and things, because I think we wanted just to get clear direction to the ordinance committee, and maybe the ordinance committee needs to refer to other Beacon work, but, but at least that's the start. So the way I understand the motion, I think it can incorporate what Mr. Francisco's talking about, and I agree with you, I've always said a statewide, you know, countrywide, but a statewide, you know, bill would have been the best thing, and I know that's what we've tried to do, it just hasn't worked. So if we can work regionally, that's the next best thing, for sure. But that's how I interpret the motion. We have more lights on now. Okay, Mr. Rouse, and then Mr. Francisco, and then Mr. House.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I think Mr. Francisco must have been looking at my crib nose over my shoulders somehow, although I don't have anything about the history of plastic in the Western civilization that you had before. Because I had drafted a, just kind of was scratching out either an amended or a substitute motion, but it was, one thing that's common in almost all our comments, I think, tonight, is that a regional solution is better than a piece-by-piece-by-patchwork solution. You know, as promoters are painfully aware, I don't really, I don't really believe in ordinances being how we're going to solve this particular problem. I think our own habits and our own personal philosophies do a lot better job, but seeing as this seems to be a fait accompli, I was going to propose that we say, yes, that going forward, we should have a regional solution to establish more legal clarity, which is going to take some time, to defray the implementation costs vis-à-vis the Beacon proposal, and also to promote the highest level of environmental benefit. Now, have you seen patchworks of these different ordinances around the state and other parts of the country? I don't think they always near to the highest level of environmental benefit. I think we could work with our regional partners to do so. And in addition, I also think that we need to be sure that our regional partners are on board. So for example, if Galita says, you know, just kidding, you guys are on your own, and I'm shopping at Vons de Lacombra, I might just say, you know what, I don't have any bags with me today, I'm going to take two more exits down the freeway and go to the Vons de Turnpike. People do things like that. Anybody who doesn't believe that, ask the folks at MTD why they haven't changed the shuttle from a quarter to 50 cents. Ask the people in parking why every time they go up 50 cents, their, their parkers go down numerically for quite a while. There's a heck of a, and a reaction, more than you would believe for those nominal fees. It really does, it does matter. So we have to make sure we do this regionally, not bit by bit. We don't want people to cross borders just so they can either make a point or save a dime. So I think the regional approach is the best one, and I don't know, Madam Mayor, if somehow we can dovetail those concepts together in a regional approach, perhaps by appointing ad hoc and/or liaison to the situation with Beacon and work towards this.
I'm going to let Mr. House, as the board member to Beacon, try to clarify, I think, how exactly all this could work, because he was at the board meeting, so...
And Madam Mayor, fortunately, we do have two of the key folks from Beacon here to help me if I mistake anything, and I really appreciate that. We may actually have a really great opportunity to kind of blend these approaches right here. And I think it's important to clarify a couple of things. One, it is essential that if, first, the Beacon board members agree with this idea of looking at this from a regional approach. Now, we're not just talking about the county of Santa Barbara, we're talking about two counties, and the coastal communities within the two counties. From the Environmental Impact Report side of the equation, the wish is to try to do something that would benefit all of the jurisdictions' member agencies. And of course, in order to do that, an ordinance has to be proposed as part of that. What's being studied? What's the, what's the study about? And that's what we were just hearing from, there needs to be some sort of a proposal. I want to just clarify, however, that there was a discussion about what Beacon's role in this would be vis-à-vis the final ordinance. It turns out that Beacon actually has authority over all of the jurisdictions within its membership, and could adopt its own ordinance, and then all of the member agencies, all the cities and the counties, would be required to abide by the ordinance. It's kind of important that we know that the board decided not to go that way. We did not decide to do that. We decided that we wanted the individual jurisdictions to craft their own ordinances, and that we would provide the service of creating an environmental impact report that could be used by the agencies in crafting their own ordinances. So that was an important decision point, and I think that it left, the mix was about right. In this case, we as the first of the agencies to step forward with something that could be utilized by Beacon in the environmental impact report analysis, would, we would have the opportunity to really craft something that we'd feel pretty comfortable with, something that we, the city of Santa Barbara, from the ordinance committee to the city council, that we would be maybe taking the lead, spearheading this effort on behalf of the region, because it would be something, as Mr. Reddy says, we at the Beacon Board could take a look at, and maybe that would be something very close to, that would be what we'd be using for the environmental study. So that's where we are. It's a mix of the two. We have a chance right now to give it to ordinance to look at with all these considerations and the things the mayor mentioned, it's part of the motion, and then put something together we as a city feel very good about. Beacon can go forth, work together as, at a regional level, look at it environmentally from the larger holistic perspective, and then we would have something that we would use when we go to our final ordinance. And I don't know if Mr. Wiley would like to chime in, but I think that we've, that's where we are right now.
Madam Mayor, I just wanted to make clear, Beacon is a minor JPA, deals with beach erosion. They do not have the ability to impose an ordinance on the city of Santa Barbara or any other city. There's just no way under state law that that's going to happen. But, you know, what I'm, what I'm hearing is a willingness on the part of Beacon to be, to do the staff work for an EIR. And to be honest with you, what we're talking about are, that the members of Beacon would be co-lead agencies in the preparation of an EIR. And to the extent there's a council consensus to pursue that, I would suggest that we simply need an agreement among the Beacon members and a budget. We don't want to, I don't think anyone would suggest that we have a, give Beacon a blank check to prepare an EIR, but that we really need to talk, the individual cities and the other public agency participants in Beacon, in fairly short order, could discuss among themselves a simple agreement to prepare an EIR and to share the cost of that. And I'll tell you, part of this is that because so many EIRs have been prepared on this subject, we don't have to recreate the wheel. Now, you have, though, you have to be careful... Now, you have, though, you have to be careful, an EIR prepared for, say, Fresno bag ordinance is not the same thing as an EIR for a coastal city. So you do, there are coastal issues, coastal environmental issues, they're having to do with the bag ordinance that you want to address. So I think that's a very doable thing. But as you said, you need a project. Under CEQA, to do an AIR, you first have to declare something a project. And I've heard it suggested that, and since Santa Barbara is the first city considering this, that we prepare a draft ordinance, and that draft ordinance becomes the quote-unquote "project" that go through the environmental review project, process.
That actually sounds very similar to the multi-jurisdictional solid waste task force in that the county is doing the EIR work for Tahiguis and the conversion technology proposal. There's a project, the county board of supervisors is the one in charge of actually initiating the EIR. However, the results of that and the final MOUs and everything comes back to all the jurisdictions about approving that project. Now, I think that is because it's a built issue, whether it's a policy issue about a bag ban, you know, we have the full EIR, and then it goes back to the jurisdictions, and the push is to have a regional approach with one consistent ordinance. But we don't dictate what other jurisdictions would do. But I think there's some parallels there that we can, so Beacon would be the agency that actually conducts the EIR on behalf of its partners, but you do need an ordinance. And I still think this motion can lend to everything we've talked about, because you need to have an ordinance to give to Beacon. So we might as well be the ones to put an ordinance that we're most comfortable with to give to Beacon to do the environmental review. That, I think, is what is, we're talking about here, and I think it's addressing a lot of the concerns I'm hearing.
Madam Mayor, thank you. That clarified, that helps me feel like we've clarified that. Also, the environmental impact report opportunity is where everyone, including the folks that are save the plastic bag, you know, and have a really serious bunch of issues and concerns, those issues and concerns can get addressed in a very thorough and thoughtful way, and then that becomes, I think, puts the balance into the equation. I'm sure the variety of interests here might wish to see.
Mr. Francisco.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Again, it's important, as we've pointed out, to note that there has to be a project before there's an EIR. And if we're serious, if the goal here is to create this regional solution, what I'm arguing is we should be creating a regional ordinance, that we should be, there's no rush to have an ordinance tomorrow. If this is something that is actually going to work for a large group of jurisdictions, let's spend at least a little time talking to those jurisdictions directly.
I agree we should talk to them. I think the ordinance committee is fully equipped to do that.
Madam Mayor, I think, I think you're missing my point. I don't believe that what Carpinteria, for instance, did was the right thing. They should not, as a member of Beacon, have gone forward with their own fairly radical version of a bag ordinance. And I see a great advantage to us as a council, and I'm offering my support for this as something that I could support. If we go forward first to work with other jurisdictions that are willing to work with us in crafting a common ordinance to be the basis of a common EIR, and a commitment from those jurisdictions that they're actually going forward with this with us together at the same time, and I think that offers great advantages both to the region and to our local merchants, and it will accomplish all the goals that you and Councilmember House have set forth.
I get that. I still think, I see two potential unknowns that could create further delays. One is Carpinteria is vested in what they just did, so that's one issue. I've heard from, that Galita in particular and the county, I think, is waiting to see what comes from us. So I think they'll take the lead from whatever it is that we do. I think they'd rather have us, just like spay and neuter ordinance from the county. We were waiting to see what they were doing, and then it came to us, and we maybe made a little tweaks. But I think this is even different than that, even more consistent from that, is that if we, if this ordinance committee can craft something that makes sense, that fits with the criteria we talked about, Galita's going to come on board, the county of Santa Barbara's going to come on board. I frankly don't know what cities in the county of Ventura are thinking, but I would hope that that would be the case. If we were to say, "Let's wait until we get, talk to all the different jurisdictions and figure out and do a survey and all this," I mean, we're talking, that's delaying unnecessarily when I think we actually have a product that's going to be, going to be accepted because it's going to be based on so many different ordinances throughout the state. And we can actually be the leader here in actually crafting something that we know makes sense, and it can actually be more efficient and with the regional peace in mind. We're not going to, we're not going to adopt anything until after a regional EIR is completed anyway. So, so we, and that would set the boundary and the baseline for, for a regional approach. We can't, just like Carpinteria, you know, we can't tell what Carpinteria is going to do, Carpinteria can't tell us what to do, neither can any other city or county. But I think what we can do is create something, and we have, and now that we've had this discussion up here, know what the parameters are to craft an ordinance that Beacon can take that will be, I think, welcomed by the other jurisdictions to take on as a regional approach. And that will, this is just jump-starting that process. I think going to the other jurisdictions and asking for their opinions about things is asking for months of delays, frankly.
Well, Madam Mayor, what I would say is that since, as you've just said, we'll need to wait until the adoption of a regional EIR before we go forward with this, that that does indeed remove some of the urgency, and that what we could do instead, and what I will propose as a substitute motion, is that we empower either an individual representative, perhaps Mr. House with Beacon, or an ad hoc committee of this council, to pursue with our regional partners a unified ordinance, a unified EIR, a commitment to our regional partner, from our regional partners to go forward with those things at the same time, and that the person or persons from city council who would be empowered to do that will follow as policy guidelines your proposed motion.
I'll second.
Okay. But I think you can very easily do that in parallel with the motion I have on the floor. You can always have those conversations with everything else while we're moving forward. So I appreciate where you're trying to get to. I want to get there with you. I just don't want to create additional delays, and I think doing one first and waiting for the other is a delay. I think that, of course, in order to even get to start an EIR, you have to have an ordinance first, so let's get moving on the ordinance. So there's a, so we're talking to the substitute motion on the floor. Mr. White?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'm just wondering whether there's not a way to fold those two together, that, to have that be part of Mr. House's motion, that this be a, that then the Mr. House Subcommittee or whomever reach out to Beacon members as part of that, that effort of gestation of an ordinance, and that that becomes part of that package? Do we not have that opportunity today?
I would say if, if the intent then is that, because one of my concerns is that we go forward and enact something before other jurisdictions do. Now, if the intent, what you're describing is that we would specify as part of this, as the intent of this, that, okay, our ordinance committee works on this ordinance, and specifically we direct the ordinance committee to work with other jurisdictions within Beacon, and that it's the intent of this council, this is an amendment, not a substitute, to go forward with this as long as we're moving together.
Hold on a minute. Do you want to drop your substitute motion first?
Not yet. I'm just talking about what kind of thinking this would be if we go forward with this. That the intent would be for all jurisdictions to move forward simultaneously on this, a common motion, a common EIR, and a common, within reason, implementation date. If that is the intent, I could support it.
Okay, of course, we can't force everyone to adopt the ordinance, right? So.
I'm talking about our intent.
Well, and Madam Mayor, I just, I think that there's, that that intent is one that we could all get behind. It's clear that one or more jurisdictions could waiver or go another way and so forth and so on, and that's just going to be a reality that's going to come back conceivably to council, conceivably to the ordinance committee, and that we cope with at that stage. But, so, I would, I would hope that, between the two of you over there, that something could come together on a, on a single motion, because I think we've got the material here to work with, and I think it would be better if we're doing it as a, on a communal effort at this point.
Mr. House?
You know, I, for a couple of things, I appreciated Mr. Rouse's comment earlier about looking for the, you know, highest environmental benefit, and I just really appreciate that, because we're going to be working together on ordinance committee, and it's good to know that we have that common ground in moving forward. So thank you for that. And then in terms of, I mean, I, there's a little bit of a problem with trying to get, like, multiple jurisdictions to all come together at the same time about pretty much anything. I mean, the fact that we can reach out, for instance, and invite them to contribute to our conversation, I certainly, as the chair of the ordinance committee, would be glad to send a letter out to each of the jurisdiction members of Beacon and ask them for their input, to participate, come to our hearings, and, but I think that, at the end of the day, it's going to really come back to the city council of Santa Barbara to determine what ordinance we're going to support for our own city. Good news, in the process, and I thank Beacon board members, my fellow board members, for being willing to take the lead agency status for an environmental impact report, because that will be a place where we'll be, all of us having to kind of report back and be, you know, representing our individual jurisdictions to make sure that the ordinance that's being studied in the environmental impact report study phase, you know, generally represents our common ground. But at the end of the day, I don't think that we can do, I'm sad to say, I don't think we could do anything right here today to ensure that all these agencies, or even the majority of them, are going to come around to our perspective. I just, so if you, if you want to make sure that, if you want it to be part of the motion, that we reach out to the other agencies, that we're members of Beacon, yeah, I'm game for that, and that we, that we listen and take into consideration what they have to say, by all means. And ultimately, once the city of Santa Barbara has reviewed our work at ordinance, and that we circulate that back out so they can have the benefit of seeing it, yes, definitely. And I'd be glad to, to make sure that happens, at least while, while I'm the chair of the ordinance committee.
It sounds like if the substitute motion was withdrawn and the original motion had an amendment that included a conversation with other Beacon jurisdictions about this type of ordinance and getting their feedback and having them agree to participate in the EIR concurrently with putting the ordinance together, if that was amended, I think that might address what you're discussing, and we can have everything, as Mr. White's saying, in one ordinance.
Madam Mayor, what I would say is this, I think we all agree that some kind of common ordinance based on the Los Angeles County model, prop 218 issues aside for the moment, some kind of ordinance based on that should be acceptable to all the Beacon members. So what I will do, I'll withdraw my substitute motion, but I'll offer an amendment that says the, part of, part of the task in this, in addition to all the things that have already been listed, is to work directly with the other jurisdictions during the crafting of the ordinance, and to state that it's the intent of this council, that we will come up with a common ordinance that will at least, that will be adopted by at least a majority of the Beacon members. We can't control everybody, I realize that. That it's the intent of this council to adopt a common EIR and a common ordinance as much as possible at the same time, simultaneously, intent being not to unfairly disadvantage our own merchants.
I, I understand what you're saying. I would feel like if everyone didn't want to touch it in Ventura County, then I still feel like I need to reserve the right to vote on something for Santa Barbara, but I think your, your amendment says that's okay.
Well, I can't control your future vote on anything.
That's right.
But I think, but the idea of the amendment would be to say, we intend that this is going to be a common effort among Beacon participants, and we're going to do everything we can to move things in that direction.
Madam Mayor.
Yes, Mr.?
One suggestion, because I'm trying to think of the mechanics of how this would work. At some point, the Beacon, the Beacon board will have to approve a project or an ordinance for study in the EIR. So you will have, that the members of the Beacon board will then have a chance to look at that ordinance and comment on it. They may not agree, you may not get a majority of the Beacon board to approve that ordinance, and if they made changes to it, then it would come back to us. And it may be a simpler process, so we could notify all the Beacon members that we're, that our ordinance committee is going to draft the ordinance based on the parameters you've set, get any additional comments from them, you know, through a written process, because I'm a little worried about how we consult and don't violate the Brown Act. We then draft an ordinance, your council approves the draft ordinance, because it couldn't be adopted till after the EIR. We then send it to the Beacon board, the Beacon board gets a chance to look at it, all their members get a chance to look at it, and then they'll, then they would go forward with, for the environmental review. And I think that way you'll get them to participate, and if you find out that half of them say, "We don't want to study it," or "We don't want to participate," then you've still got a chance to say, "Okay, we don't want to participate in paying for the EIR." And in a simultaneous process, we can work with Beacon to develop an MOU on how we pay for the environmental review, and also have that approved by the city council before the actual cost of the environmental review goes forward. Does that make sense?
The city clerk got that? That's why, that's why we have this on TV and on tape. I think that makes, I think that makes a lot of sense. I think that makes a lot of sense.
We would take the lead in drafting the ordinance, we would notify the other members we're doing it, solicit their written comments to the ordinance committee, and then we would, once the council approves it, we'd submit that ordinance to Beacon for them, their board to then review before they initiate the environmental review.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. House?
I believe that that's a fair amendment to my motion. I'm looking at Mr. Reddy, just in case there's, he could just say, "That's practicable." Yes, and he is, he's indicating that that's practicable from the Beacon's perspective, and I appreciate your suggestion. I think that helps us get where we want to go, and then it also leaves each jurisdiction whole, and we're not trying to do their business for them, but we're giving them every opportunity to do this on a regional basis. Thank you.
Does the seconder agree to the amendment?
Yes.
Okay?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, any other discussion on this topic? Mr. Hotchkiss?
Yes, Madam Mayor, I can see that this is going to pass, but I want to be the one voice, I guess, here who speaks not for most of the folks in this room, but for most of the folks out there, and that is to say that in the tradition of democracy, choice still seems to be the best for me, or solution, that people feels very strongly, most of the people here, maybe all of them, one direction, and a lot of people out there in another direction, and that for those that, who are not able to come here today, were working all day long, maybe working this evening, going home on the bus or walking, whatever, the choice of being able to choose whether they have a plastic bag or not, don't have to pay for it, that's the way to go. Just as, I don't think any of you would want to be told, "You have to use a plastic bag." They should not be told, "They have to use another kind of bag." So it would be best to leave it to individuals. That isn't going to carry today, but at least I want people to know that that's what I think is the right thing. Santa Barbara is a really clean city. Recently, I've, you know, I've heard things about cleaning beaches and stuff. I was the volunteer, the first volunteer for the recent Henry's Beach cleanup, a guy who signed in first, and I went all the way up under the Douglas Family Preserve and then all the way down about a mile the other direction, didn't find a single, my bag that we're talking about, I found one Ziploc bag. And then did the same thing, walking from the Child's Estate to Stern's Wharf, had the same result, zero kind of plastic bags that we're talking about. Not actually a lot of litter at all, our beaches are really clean, and that says something about our populace and also the city, the way we care for things. So I'd like to see that kind of, already that attention, that consciousness rewarded, and not, what do I want to say, punished, so that we can't, you know, we should say to people, as others have said up here, "The consciousness of the people in our town is more important than just making a rule," so that people just go, "Oh, well, that's the rule." So I really am back for, if I can put it this way, pro-choice. So I'll probably be the only vote that goes that way here, but I think that that's really the best way to go.
Mr. Rouse?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I clearly advocate for the regional approach. I'm not particularly 100% comfortable with the motion, because there is some chicken and egg. I don't know that, we've gotten some assurances, the other agencies are thinking along the same lines, I don't know. I've seen some other agencies, like what happened last night, do some pretty wacky things. So I'm a little uncomfortable with the way the motion is crafted currently. Also, in general, I have to agree with Mr. Hotchkiss, is that I agree that we're all going to the same place. We all want plastic out of the ocean, and we don't want it to loosen the environment. But we have a big book full of ordinances that I, that I always call the graveyard of good intentions. I think there are better ways to approach this, and I don't think our environmental consciousness is enhanced by an ordinance. I think, I think we are who we are because of where we are and who we, and how we live. So I will not be supporting the motion.
I think, Mr. Rouse, the concerns you have of what other jurisdictions might do will be... be very much taken care of, because we're the ones that are going to be setting the tone of what the ordinance is. And if we wait for everyone else to take charge, you'll get perhaps more like carpenteries that have other concerns, as opposed to if we're taking charge, then we have much more direction in how it moves forward, and we will get that regional approach. So, I, so I just want to just add that to, you know, your, I get the chicken and egg thing, but, you know.
I appreciate that. I'm a little concerned about some of the legal concerns, but I will, if so directed, you know, we're diligently, as part of the ordinance committee, to work with Mr. House and Mr. Hotchkiss to move this forward.
I appreciate that, since it's Mr. House, Mr. Rouse, and Mr. Hotchkiss who are on the ordinance committee. So, we do, I know, this does need to, and I think the motion does have it come back here.
Yes, Madam Mayor. And very specifically, that this comes back to City Council. I think it's very important that whatever we do at ordinance gets back here as a proposal, and then we get to look at it one more time. And Madam Mayor, I just want to say, I've had this letter on my, next to my in-basket on my desk in City Hall since last year when he was nine years old. Wellesley wanted to know if I was on the side of keeping plastic bags, or banning plastic bags, but he said quite boldly, "I personally think we should ban plastic bags," with an exclamation point. And it's been a little inspiration. So, I don't even know who this young person is, but they're 10 years old now. Thank you very much for the inspiration. Appreciate that.
Okay, we're almost ready for Mr. Francisco. Did you have something?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. And I appreciate Mr. Rouse and Mr. Hotchkiss's comments. And I think the important thing here, what I want to see happen, is not Santa Barbara moving forward alone. And I think that Mr. Armstrong's suggestion of a simplifying amendment that says that we are not going forward with this until we have some commonalities, some agreement, and commitments on who's paying for the EIR. That's why I can, I can come around and support this. I feel that it accomplishes at least some of the goals we had, and I'm fine committing the labor and energy of the ordinance committee to the fine work they're going to do for us.
Thanks a lot.
Any other questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
That two? Okay, five-two. Okay, that took a while. Thank you all for staying, and I apologize to those next on the agenda for having, I said 3:30, four o'clock. Boy, was I wrong. Are we, I think we're, they've been waiting for quite a while. This won't take very long if we can just keep moving. Okay. Thank you. Item number 16.
Interview and Appointment of Youth Intern Applicants to Community Development and Human Services Committee and Library Board.
Thank you, and again, thank you for your patience. Ms. Young.
Good afternoon, Madam Mayor, members of the council. We're here today to ask you to interview and appoint for the youth intern position. We had two youth intern applicants. However, Ms. Eileen Saltman, her schedule got overwhelming, and so she's not able to serve on the board that she was going to serve on. But, we would like for you to consider interviewing and appointing Elizabeth Lynn. The youth intern program, as you probably know, was established in order to help youth to have an understanding of governance, and also to be part of the advisory board process, as well as to get youth input. And it was started by the City Council by resolution. Today, we are asking you to interview Elizabeth Lynn. Elizabeth is interested in being appointed to the Community Development and Human Services Board. Just to tell you a little bit about Elizabeth. She is a Dos Pueblos High School student, and according to her resident application, and also from the letter of recommendation that she got, she's committed to the community. She's a president of the Ballroom Club, and she's also an instructor. She's a president of the Good Food Club. She's a vice president of the Chinese Culture Club. She's involved with Student Senate, and she's a mentor of the academy. Ms. Lynn states that one of her passions is helping others, and she says that's why her friends always called her a workaholic, because she's always trying to get involved in helping others. The Community Development and Human Services is interested in having a youth intern, and she has attended their board meetings, and is very excited about serving as a youth intern for them. So, at this time, we'd like to call her up so that she could be interviewed by you, and that you could consider appointing her to the Community Development and Human Services Committee.
Thank you, welcome. Want to put that mic right down so we can hear you? Welcome.
Good afternoon, Mayor. I'm Elizabeth Lynn, and I hope to be appointed to the Human Service Board and Resources. I have attended one of the meetings previously, and they're discussing about the grants that were going to be given, and how the process would be, and I found that very interesting. And it was a lot of work for a lot of them, but I hope that I can contribute many creative ideas to them as a youth, because many youths can understand what's going on between children like us, and ideas that are circulating among us, and what we think. And that really improves the council, I believe.
Well, good, and we have some great letters of recommendation from all over the place. And how, when do you sleep is always when I want to ask a lot of our interns who come in. It's amazing that the teens that come in who do so much for the community, and thank you for considering the City of Santa Barbara is one of the many, many things that you do. Ms. Mario?
Ms. Lynn, hi. Your application says you're part of the Student Senate. Can you describe some of the work you've done there? And is that at your high school?
Yes, it is. The Student Senate is when one person in each class during fourth period is appointed as the Class Senate, and is sent to the Leadership Board Meeting once a month to listen about what's going on during the month, and what's going on during school, any events, sports, et cetera. And then we go back to class, and we tell our classmates. And we also ask our classmates whether or not they like certain ideas or propositions that our school has. And we go back and talk to the leadership meeting and counselors.
Any other questions for Ms. Lynn? No, I don't think so. But do we have a motion?
I move that we appoint Ms. Lynn to the commission that she seeks.
I'll second that.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
I'm voting aye, because I read before, I didn't hear your testimony right now, but I read all the stuff before, and I thought, "My God, this is great." So, you too.
Well, thank you. It'll be great to have your perspective on the Community Services, CDBG and Human Services Committee. That's really important. I know the, that committee very much appreciates diverse points of view on very tough decisions that they make, so I'm glad you were part of that.
Thank you.
So, welcome. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Item number, we skipped, item number 17, yeah.
Santa Barbara Youth Council's 2011 Youth Impact Award.
Ms. Young?
Madam Mayor, members of the council. On February 29th, the City of Santa Barbara's Youth Council was one of the recipients of the Santa Barbara County Kids Network Youth Impact Award. The Youth Impact Award is provided by the county, and it's based on creation from the Board of Supervisors. I'd like to introduce you to Joy Thomas, who's the Outreach and Education Specialist for Kids Network, and she's here to talk about the award for the Youth Council, and to present to them the Santa Barbara Youth Council.
Thank you, Susan. Good afternoon. My name is Joy Thomas, and I'm here to tell you a little bit about this award that was received by the Santa Barbara Youth Council. The Kids Network was created by the County Board of Supervisors as an advisory body on issues that impact children and families, and is composed of members from public agencies, the courts, law enforcement, education, community-based organizations, school-linked programs, and parent groups. This network coordinates existing services for children and families, and helps determine priority needs and concerns for children in areas of human services, health, education, and juvenile justice. Every year, the Kids Network honors young people who are making a difference in their communities. We receive nominations from the community at large for individuals or groups of young people ages 10 to 18, who live or go to school in the county. And on behalf of the Kids Network of Santa Barbara County, it's my pleasure to be here to honor the Santa Barbara Youth Council, who were one of this year's recipients of the Youth Impact Awards. On February 29th, we held a ceremony honoring three recipients of the awards, and they were actually all three from the City of Santa Barbara this year. Pete Chaconos, Matthew Wagenhurst, and the Santa Barbara Youth Council. In addition to a small monetary award that was made possible through the Charlene Chase Memorial Fund, the winners also received certificates of honor from several people, the Kids Network Chair, who is Santa Barbara County Second District Supervisor Janet Wolf, First District Supervisor Salud Carvajal, California State Senator Tony Strickland, California State Assembly Member Doss Williams, and Congresswoman Lois Capps. So, these young people have been recognized on several levels for their achievements. I want to extend my congratulations to the former and current members of the Santa Barbara Youth Council. These young people who are honoring, again today, are youth who make a difference in the lives of others. They stand out, and they stood out to our selection committee for the change they've created, and the way that they give themselves to make their community stronger. The Santa Barbara Youth Council was recognized for its longstanding volunteerism. The group dedicated over 2,000 hours annually to community service projects, and they've worked to transform challenges in the city into positive action. Among their accomplishments and achievements that we honored are their contributions to Skaters Point, Teen Alley, 1235 Teen Center, as well as their collaborative work with other nonprofits like Domestic Violence Solutions, Endowment for Youth Committee, Friday Night Live, CADA, and Future Leaders of America. The community of Santa Barbara has been and will continue to be shaped by the work of the Youth Council, through actions such as their assistance in establishing the city's social host ordinance, and by their youth speak-outs that they hold, where teens can voice their feelings and thoughts on topics ranging from suicide, bullying, teen rights, and underage drinking. In addition to this year's winners, we also recommended a few distinctive nominees, one of whom was Youth Council member Michael Yee, youth intern for the Parks and Rec Commission. So, I wanted to give him a mention here today as well. At this time, I'd like to invite, if there are any members of the Youth Council still here, hey, hi, to stand and be recognized. We want to say, on behalf of the Kids Network, and here today in front of you, the City of Santa Barbara, thank you to the Youth Council for your commitment to the young people of Santa Barbara, for the many ways that you continue to make the city a better place. And we thank you all for having us here today to help recognize the value and contributions of these young people, as they work so hard today to become leaders of tomorrow.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, if you won't mind, come on up and give us your names, and what year you're in, and what school you go to, and I want to congratulate you all. How fantastic. Yeah.
Hello, I am Christina Rodriguez. I am a senior at Santa Barbara High School, and I'm also historian of this year. And I'd like to thank you guys for everything you do, and thank you for sitting through everything that we put you through as the, as people of Santa Barbara. So, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Miguel Hasso. I'm a senior at San Marcos High School, and I'm also a member of the Youth Council. I would also like to thank you guys for everything you guys do for the city.
Thank you.
My name is Jordan Lund. I'm a junior at San Marcos High School, and this is like my first year on Youth Council, so it's a really good experience. And I'd like to thank all of you guys as well for buddying up with us, and kind of guiding us through this process.
People have to put up with us, too. That's part of it, yeah.
Madam Mayor, members of the council, my name is Yvette Gill. I'm a junior at Santa Barbara High School, and this is Chair of the Santa Barbara Youth Council. And just as my members have said, on behalf of the Youth Council, we truly would like to thank you for honoring us today. We'd like to thank the Kids Network, of course, for allowing us to receive this award. We feel very honored, and, you know, we really hope that the work we do here in the community has an impact on the youth, whether it be through our speak-outs, whether it be through events, and also we held the Candidates Forum, as you may know, this past fall. So, we're really just trying to be the, have the youth have a voice in this community, and really be involved. So, once again, we'd like to thank you.
Great. Well, thank you. We always appreciate the Youth Council. It's nice to see Kids Network do the same. So, thank you and congratulations. We have a couple people like to say a few things. Mr. House?
Just very briefly, I just want to thank you for stepping up into leadership. And you're giving a voice to the young people of Santa Barbara. You're doing it as representatives, just like we are. We're elected to represent the community and represent our constituents. That's what you're doing, too. So, when you speak out, when you host those forums, fora, and have the chance for the young people to come and to learn, and to study an issue like the social host ordinance, which was, you know, quite an extensive process, and before you, I think any of you came along to this, it just makes such a difference. I mean, that was legislation that went all the way through City Council and became very real, and will protect the lives of young people in our community. The council is just phenomenal, and your leadership is just remarkable, and it will stand you in good stead for the rest of your lives. I know you know that. And so, thank you very much for stepping up into leadership.
Mr. Hotchkiss?
Ms. Gill, is your family the one that owns El Sido?
Yes, they are.
Well, you've made it extremely difficult for me to stay to my diet and lose weight, I want to tell you. Your chile gianos are just unbelievable. Sorry, couldn't help that.
Well, you've had a long, long, long family connection to the Youth Council, too, so I appreciate seeing you as Chair as well. So, congratulations. Thank you. Okay. Any council member committee assignment reports? Okay, we have some closed session items. You want to read those out?
Madam Mayor, Madam Mayor. We would recommend, because I know a couple of you wanted to go to the Cottage Hospital meeting tonight, that we only have item number 19, closed session, and that we continue 20 and 21 to a later date.
Okay, as long as that's not a timing issue, Mr. Wiley?
No, Madam Mayor, it's not, and I was wondering if next Tuesday might not be a good day for those two. Looks like a light agenda at this point.
Knock on wood. Okay. So, we'll just continue those to a future date. So, can you read item number 19?
Item 19, Conference with Legal Counsel Regarding Pending Litigation.
Okay, and we'll adjourn from there. Before we do, we lost a community icon last week in Salma Rubin. She was three weeks shy of her 97th birthday, founder of dozens of local nonprofit organizations on the boards of, I think, 10 or so by the time she died, usually around 20 at a time.